A regular meeting of the Delta County Commissioners is being held this date pursuant to the following call, and the letter to the Commissioners' date is November 30th, 2023, and reading as follows. The Honorable Members of the Delta County Board of Commissioners, dear Commissioners, a regular meeting of the Delta County Board of Commissioners is scheduled for Tuesday, December 5th, 2023, at 5:00 PM in the conference room of the Delta County Service Center. Sincerely yours, Nancy Presraki, Delta County Clerk. Please rise for a word of prayer. Lord, as we begin this meeting, we are thankful for our many blessings. We ask for guidance to help our Commissioners make decisions in the best interests of the citizens of our county, and we pray for the safety of our military men and women. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Commissioner Melner.
Here.
Commissioner View.
Here.
Commissioner Barron.
Here.
Commissioner Moyle.
Here.
And Commissioner Peterson.
Here.
All right, the meeting will come to order. Commissioners, if you could make sure that your microphone is switched on, and people in the audience, if you would please make sure that your cellphones are turned to silent. I'd be very grateful. Thank you for coming tonight and making this a part of your evening. Special orders of business as far as the Commissioners' informational workshop right into just the meeting, but Commissioner Barron had wanted to bring something up regarding recent state law just passed and possible activity with the Planning Commission. Mr. Barron?
Okay. Steve, I did give you a call, and thanks for calling back. Well, we're playing tag yet, but we'll get there. But the, last week, the Governor signed a citing law on wind and solar, and they, according to the law, it's one year after either the signature or the effective date, which is February.
Signature.
It's a signature. That's what I saw, but there's an argument going on down in Lansing right now. But I think it's a signature. When it goes into effect, the, I think your local municipal governments that have solar ordinances or don't will have to have theirs either updated or put one in, or they could, they don't have to put some in. You have a few counties in the state that are, what I call free counties, they don't have zoning, so they don't have these ordinances, but generally don't. In any way, the, so what I wanted to bring it up for, and I thank you Commissioner Moyle for that, is that I think the, I think, see, Bob, you and, John, you're both on the Planning Commission?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay, that should review the ordinance that we have and compare it to what the state has passed, and then, you know, just make the, take a look at it. My recollection is that it's, according to what I've read on the bill itself, I think we're in very good shape. We actually, according to what it says, that if you, a contractor, or a developer will have to come to the local, and the local will have 120 days to respond to it or not, and if, and if there's response, if there's not a response, a positive response, then it would go before the Public Service Commission. But it doesn't, it does not mean that the locals have lost their power, it just means that if they, they have the opportunity to work with that contractor, and that the state statute that's in there is a ceiling. It used to be that that was a floor, and they could go above on different things, and this is a ceiling that's put there. So if you're an area that you feel you want to have this development, the developers, I think if they feel welcomed, will be more inclined to go work in those areas than where they're not feeling welcome. But if the, if the project is viable, they're going to be there eventually. But I think our, our solar ordinance is, I believe, when you, on review, is going to look pretty favorable, and a developer may come in and decide that they're not going to go to the Public Service Commission. They would work with us locally. So that, and our ordinance was to be attractive for this, and so, and I'd just like to see that you guys review this, take a look at it, maybe there's a few things that we, on ours, that we want, that need tweaking, and then I think we'll be set for when this thing does kick in.
Are you guys comfortable bringing that to the Planning Commission and having a comparison?
We will have to, yeah.
We will have to definitely do that, but I hear there's a lot of ruckus in Lansing on this right now, and there's a group of people that are trying to raise several, several million dollars to get this overturned.
Oh?
Well, they're going to try to rescind it.
Good luck. I mean, you've got, you know, I don't think it's going to happen, but.
Well, let me, let me add a comment to that, because I was just in a Zoom committee meeting down in Lansing with the Finance Committee, and that was one of the legislative updates, was that there is a group of people trying to make a referendum to null and void this, but the MAC meeting that I was at, most of the county commissioners and administrators that were there said that it doesn't look good, because counties, townships, public government entities cannot give any money to it, any support to it, or anything. It has to be initiative of just the people, and it will be super expensive and very time-consuming, and there's a time limit on it. And it, I mean, it could happen, but likelihood it probably won't. And then getting back to, we just need a policy that kind of mimics what the legislators passed. We can't have more restrictions or anything, it's just got to coincide with what they just passed. And if it goes locally, I have a 10-page legislative analysis on it that I've been reading, and I don't interpret the same as everybody else, but it kind of looks like if it is taken locally, there is an incentive of $2,000 per megawatt produced that will be given to the county or the townships that, that take on this project and do the zoning for it, instead of letting it go to the Michigan Public Service Commission.
Is that like a one-time thing, or is it a?
I think it's a yearly thing, if I'm not mistaken.
No, I think it's a one-time.
Oh, is it one-time?
At least from what I read, but then again, there's so much.
It's all new, so, I mean, but there is an incentive somehow, somewhere.
Well, but part of that $2,000 is, is if it goes to the Public Service Commission, they have to come back, and then you pay the local entity, is it $75,000?
They have to pay that upfront, though.
Yeah, to allow the local entity to sue.
It's complicated.
Yeah, it's a pretty bizarre situation.
We do lose control, though. You know, we do lose control in the end, but we still have a say a little bit.
Well, we have more say than we realize, because I believe when we review our solar ordinance, we're going to find out that we were less restrictive than what the.
The state has passed a more draconian version than what we have.
So it'll be more for those that have special zoning in the different townships that would have to worry differently.
Oh, definitely, where they, where they basically have made it an impossibility to do anything. So they're the ones that are going to be in the, they're going to either have a, that change where the, well, wait a minute, if this is coming, maybe we should work with it, rather than fight against it, because it is coming.
Well, this is just a discussion, so when we get into the regular meeting, maybe we should have you or somebody that wants to make a motion that we officially give it to the Planning Commission to look at and coincide with the legislative.
Add that under the agenda.
Yeah, well, I'm just saying, I mean, you know.
Well, be a motion, or the Chair could, Chair could just assign it. That's in the power of the Chair to do that.
I don't know.
So I think rather than a whole motion. But I just wanted to make, have a little discussion on it, and then, because that is something that is definitely taking place. So, anyway, that's, is there anything else?
Anything else, guys? Before we move out of, this is the quickest informational workshop we've ever had. Is that, okay. Mr. View, do you have anything?
Well, I thought we.
See the wheels turning, so.
They're always turning, but they never come over. But the biggest thing would be, I was concerned about the letter that was sent to the administration and the Chair on, from Lansing on the, on our forest product, project.
Are we switching, we can talk about that, but I mean, are we switching gears?
Well, I think we're done with this. We're elaborate.
That's what I'm asking, aren't we?
We are, but generally in the workshop, we discuss things, and we don't take action on it.
No, I don't want to take any action.
Well, but we have it under a agenda under, under item 18.
Yeah, it'll come up on 18.
Business, so that's where we can get into the further discussion of the.
Okay, I had two full pages of questions.
But, but you see, with that, our workshop right about.
In regards to what Mr. Barron has brought up, is there any questions from the Commissioners? There's none, then we can move on to the regular. Very, very good, special orders of business would be concluded. We're looking at approval of the minutes of the previous county board meeting of 11:07:23.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Barron and supported by Commissioner Melner. Additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That would pass. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, the approval of tonight's agenda. Are there any additions to the agenda tonight, or do we accept as submitted?
The question is, we've had a number of items under the airport situation here, and you didn't agenda item for that, or are we going to?
The airport?
Well, it.
It's on Sunday.
I know, but there's a number of those items, but are we under the?
Department head updates.
Department head updates?
Yeah.
Okay, sounds good.
So I would need a motion to accept the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Barron, supported by Commissioner Melner, to accept the agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that, we have an agenda tonight, very good. Presentation of written communications, communications received, communications forwarded, Ashley?
Yes.
Okay. How many do we have, and?
Three received and forwarded.
Very, very good. I would need a motion to put those on file.
I'll make the motion that we put communications received and forwarded on file.
Support.
I have a motion by Commissioner Peterson and support by Commissioner Barron. Additional discussion, please. All those in favor of placing these on file signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, reports of standing statutory special committees and others, do we have anything?
Yes. We have public, public health minutes, human services board minutes, and township association minutes.
On those three items, I had a motion to put them on file, please.
So moved.
Aye, we're, okay, so you've got a motion by Commissioner Barron, supported by Commissioner Melner to place the minutes of those committees on file. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. We have a public comment on agenda items, we have Stephen from Wells. Yes.
No.
You don't want it?
No, I want it, yes.
Please.
Okay.
How do you pronounce your last name?
Kacharny.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I wouldn't. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Stephen Kacharny. I am the Commander of the Delta County Veterans Council, and an officer in good standing of just about every veterans organization here within Delta County. I am also one of the three members of the Delta County Soldiers and Sailors Relief Commission, which is barely funded through the county's general fund to the amount of about $8,000. I am here to alert and announce that the veterans of Delta County wish to see our county adopt and enact Michigan Public Act 192 and establish a county of Department of Veterans Affairs. Almost all counties across the state have done this, including all of those in the UP. Under Public Act 214, in which the county is currently operating, it is just not funding the Soldiers and Sailors Relief Fund at levels that are necessary to help the veterans of our community. You, our county commissioners, have to authorize the establishment of the Department of Veterans Affairs and enact Public Act 192 to establish the Department of Veterans Affairs. By doing this, the county can generate funding necessary to properly man our Veterans Service Office, our VSO, Dave DeXavier, and any other individuals that can assist him in his duties, and allowing a much greater service to the 3,000-plus veterans and their families of Delta County. As it is today, our current VSO takes care of over 3,000 veterans in our county and their families, all by himself. Our next-door county, Schoolcraft County, which has one-half of our population and one-half of our, of a veteran population, has two standing VSOs and one part-time VSO taking care of their county. This is an established protocol throughout the UP that have a Delta, have a county Department of Veterans Affairs. We are years behind in Delta County taking care of our veterans. I am here to let you know that we, as the veterans of Delta County, would look to get on a formal agenda item to discuss this in the future, so we can look at enacting Public Act 192 and establishing a Department of Veterans Affairs. Thank you.
Thank you for your service, sir.
You do.
Any questions for public comment on agenda items? Please.
Well, Johnny, I was a little bit late.
Good to see you, sir.
But for the, for the record, I am Allen Hoffre, U.P. Whittails. If you would, they can give these to the, I'll make sure I got the right ones. Yep, these are going to be commissioners, and you should have a copy of them. Yes, I brought along some of the pictures and stuff from what we started with, with the Delta County Forest, as far as the old blinds and everything that were there.
You can start his time.
Pardon?
I'm just letting you know.
Thank you. Can you start his time, Ashley?
That's fine.
I can't find the remote, so it's just on my phone. Go ahead, whenever you're ready.
But anyway, go ahead. I realize I only have three minutes here. My real reason for being here basically is to ask you Commissioners to actually think about putting together an advisory committee for the Delta County Forest. We need one as far as helping you people out with all the workload you have, and for us to take and do some of the footwork and everything ahead of time to present to you. You people run the actual Delta County Forest, but we, especially myself and a few of the others, would like to take it and help you do that, so we can maximize what can be done for the general public. This is strictly for the general public. I've been working 36 years with U.P. Whittails for the general public. I have hunted public land all my life, and I think that we can, we can really do something here. The overall is, we are just starting. Let's look at it in a little different way. Today's people, they think they can do everything overnight. The Delta County Forest is not on Amazon's overnight delivery by any means, okay? We have years here to work on this, to put things together. Are there things that can be, can be done? You bet there is. You know, the trails and everything are going to have to be gone over in the spring because of the winter snow, the breaking of some of those saplings, different things. We need to do some, some seeding, frost seeding, to make them better. We'll probably have to end up later on actually brush hogging those wildlife openings, and many other things. So I wish you would consider putting something together, and that's my real reason for being here. There's a few other things on that sheet that I gave you that I don't, don't think I'll bring up at this time, but if yous have any questions or anything in the future, please let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Ettenhofer.
Thank you.
All right, finally, any additional comments on items, please? Going once, going twice, comments on agenda items are closed. Committee reports, I will start with the Administrator's report.
On November 7th, Delta County and local agencies received their 2% grant agreements for the following projects. Community Action Agency for the Retired and Senior Volunteer Program of $4,200, the Delta County Solid Waste Authority for tire recycling of $6,000, Upset for $19,806, the Delta County Chamber of Commerce, and their project was economic development for $44,000. They also received for the project of wildlife restoration of $5,000, along with the Great Lakes Sports Fishermen, they have a land purchase for the wildlife restoration of $5,000. The Delta County Economic Development Alliance, in support of their business and community support of $5,000, and QPAD received for Michigan Recycling Coalition Upper Peninsula Outreach Meeting of $475. I'd just like to thank the Hannibal Indian Community for continuing their support of programs and services for the citizens of Delta County. On November 14th, I attended an airport advisory meeting. The airport Bob Randstadler updated the advisory board of the milestones, accomplishments in the state of the airport, and I'm very happy with Bob and his staff for the direction they are taking the airport. Bob is here today to talk about the airport, and will answer any questions you may have for him during the department updates. Delta County Forest, I received a letter from the DNR Trust Fund that has all been sent to you for review. The DNR is asking for a response from Delta County within 30 days. Their letter states that there have been numerous complaints regarding the Cornell Forest and the restriction of public access. They are inquiring specifically about the gates, ponds, and additional parking. I spoke with the Conservation District Chair, Joe Kaplan, and we discussed about the involvement with the Conservation District on the response. I did bounce a few ideas off him addressing the ponds and the additional parking, but we're looking for direction from the Commissioners. Delta County Employee Health Insurance, over the past week, administration has been very busy with enrolling employees with health insurance. I have elected to stay with our current provider, VAST. They offer a wide range of plans for our employees, from routine care with low deductibles to high deductible plans that are free to our employees at whatever single, two-person or family. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. I would need a motion to place this report on file.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Barron, supported by Commissioner Peterson. Additional discussion? All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That is on file. We have a Finance Committee meeting that was held last Friday, 12:1:23. Mr. Barron?
Okay, the, one item from that, that was on that, that was, went through the committee is on our agenda, we'll be addressing that later. Two other items were tabled, and so I would move to have the report put on file.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Barron.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Peterson. Additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, that is on file. We have Department head updates. Other than Mr. Randstadler at the airport, are there any other department heads who wish to update the commission on what's going on in your department?
Commissioner Moyle, Joe Kaplan, I was wondering if I could.
You may.
When the parks and forests discussed under new business, I would be.
What about it, sir?
Well, when you discuss the DNR letter, the response, that seems to be Delta County Parks and Forests might be more appropriate to address the commission at that time.
That wouldn't fit into the agenda. If you want to address this now, please go ahead.
Not going to fit in.
Because it's not our protocol, sir.
Delta County Parks and Forests.
Is it, is that breaking protocol, or not? Hold on. I need it quiet in this audience, please.
I think that'd be a question for Nancy.
You're a parliamentarian, is that, is that?
If you want to invite him at that time.
What's the pleasure of the Commissioner? I need some direction.
It's yours.
All right, we're just.
I, I just soon see him participate if we bring it up, or he can do both.
Well, I, I, my, my comment is, I knew other people wanted to speak during our discussion of specific items, and we have not allowed it.
Agreed.
I mean, that's what I've noticed in my 10.
Anyway, you're here now, so go ahead, sir.
All right, well, as you know, the Delta Conservation District has the management agreement with the county until the end of the year, and our board has passed a motion to address what we see as a liability to the ponds, a lack of access, legal access, that, that came, that came up, that's mentioned in the DNR letter, and then also increasing access for the, for disabled hunters, or disabled users. And I can tell you, since the board has changed over, we have had really very little interaction. I mean, I know that Commissioner Peterson is Park liaison, but there's been no discussion with him, and Commissioner Barron has attended our meetings, but we haven't addressed issues that our board has raised. So we're ready to move forward to address the liability of those ponds, because it was the district that put them in. And if we don't have discussion with you, then we're going to move forward with what we plan to do unilaterally before the end of the year.
I appreciate your time, sir. Any questions for, for Chairman?
No, this is, this is general, excuse me.
This is Department head base, so, yeah.
And then the other thing I'll add is, we will be also sharing what our recommendations are to address the shortcomings of the district's management of those parks. But most important are those ponds. We put them in, they're a liability, and we do not want to have that liability as we end this contract. That's unacceptable to our board of directors. Thank you.
You can interact with them, Billy.
I have one, one question. On them ponds, as of January 1st, where does the liability go?
Depends on who gets hurt and what pocket they go after.
It's the county's liability, it's the county's property.
Are you willing to sign that?
Wouldn't matter if I signed it or not.
Indemnify, well, we're looking to be indemnified, because we created it, it was under our watch, and we're leaving, and you haven't recognized it in the same light as we have, as far as a liability to health and safety.
Yeah, well, that's what I wanted to know. I mean, is your liability released once the contract or your management duties are gone and the county takes over?
I have no idea, I'm not an attorney.
I don't either.
If you want to release this from liability, that would be much appreciated.
I think we should.
I think you should, too.
At that time, yes.
Before that time. All right, because we're, we're on a short timeframe here of taking care of problems that we inherited.
What, what kind of a, what is your fix? What are you thinking?
For those ponds? Well, if you look at them, I mean, they're, they're like this. They're not wildlife ponds, they weren't constructed as wildlife ponds. There's no grants that we have found that links them to anything for wildlife. They were put in as a barrier. And they're, they're.
I am interested, come to order, gentlemen, hold on, I'm interested in an update here, not getting into debate.
Okay, yeah, I agree.
That's why I would.
And your position on the ponds are, I think, pretty clear. And so, is there any questions for Mr. Kaplan, from anybody? If you want to ask a question, go ahead. I just wanted to make sure.
What is your fix for these ponds?
To make them, if, if there was, to make them accessible, so people can walk past that trail without falling in and potentially hurting themselves. So the slope is a huge one. Those, those ponds aren't being used by wildlife. There's some canine tracks around them, but they're, they're steep-sided, and they're dangerous.
Anything else, gentlemen? Anything, Mr. Kaplan, anything else, sir?
No, that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'm available if you need me.
I appreciate it, Joel, thank you. All right, any other department head updates, please? Any other department head updates with that?
Wait, I think this is where Mr. Brandstadler.
That's where I was just about to welcome him up.
Yeah.
Come on up, sir.
Here, Nancy.
Oh, Nancy, all right, you're updating.
I just wanted to give you a quick update on the early voting. So I was downstate in Clare on Thursday and Friday, Bureau of Elections was there. We also did CPL updates, too, but mainly the focus was on early voting, and learned a lot. There were some pilot programs that took place in November, and we were given information about that. The other information that I received, and I haven't talked to Ashley about this yet, is because we're in charge of the early voting, we'll be in charge of hiring the election workers, and so that will, they will become part-time employees of the, of the county, so that's something I'll have to work out with Ashley and our payroll clerk. So, so there's a lot involved in it, but we're moving forward, and we'll be working on this. Early voting will start the second Saturday before the election, so there's a lot of training that will have to be done, and I've already started receiving the equipment for the early voting, received a couple of laptops for the early voting, and we've secured the Wells Township Hall for the early voting, so I've been working very closely with the city and township clerks to keep that moving forward. city and township clerks to keep that moving forward, so um, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, can I, um, what is the participation of the township? Because they don't have to go into this, they can run their own, correct? Do we have 100% participation?
Yes, they can do their own, um, and I could have just stayed right out of it.
Right.
Which...
But is everybody...
Made my life a lot easier, but uh, but I was willing to work with the townships and uh, they all, because they, otherwise they bear the full cost of this, so um...
So that's a good thing.
So that's a good thing, that we're all working together. We will have two precincts, uh, both located in Wells Township.
So everybody in the township knows where to go then?
And they'll, they will be receiving...
On the early voting.
Yes, they will be receiving a postcard um, in the mail, notifying them of the place, time, the dates.
So that's um, that's not just for Wells Township, that's for the entire county?
That's for the entire county.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Mr. Randstadler, please. Having never met you before, I'd like to welcome you.
Thank you.
And thank you for your service, and I um, you have our undivided commissioners, you have this report?
Yes.
Um, please begin because I have numerous questions.
Sure. Well, good evening, members of the board, and good evening, members of the public. Uh, I wish I was here under more favorable circumstances, but I'm probably going to deliver some news that I feel is uh, negative and shocking at the current status of our airport. Uh, prior to getting to that news though, I, I do want to be respectful, mindful of everyone's time, but I think I should probably preface my comments by saying that I am not a subject matter expert when it comes to airport management. I do not have any direct experience managing airports in the past. However, by virtue of my 20 years of military aviation service and college courses and some academics that I've taken in the past, I am very familiar with uh, regu, the regulatory process, certain aspects of the administration process when it comes to airport uh, aviation maintenance. Uh, I also um, I've spent a good deal of time accumulating transferable skills and experience that are very applicable to this job. With that said, uh, the first 60 days here as the Delta County Airport Manager, I've been very thankful for my position. There is a tremendous group of people that are working at the airport who are heavily invested in their jobs. They do their jobs extremely well on a, on a daily basis, and the information I'm sharing here, although it is negative in nature for the most part, I will say that there is, there is no danger to the traveling public. We continue to operate the airport in a safe manner. Uh, we have a crew of five tremendous operations and maintenance personnel out there that are attending to our airfield every day, making sure everything's getting done just fine. We have the Unified Sky West Crew who's taking care of the commercial air carrier service uh, through Delta Sky West, they're doing a tremendous job. Uh, and there's also several other, of course, uh, sections within the county, uh, from a, like an administrative infrastructure standpoint, who are doing very well to assist us in everything we're doing on a daily basis. Uh, the focus of what I'm delivering here this evening unfortunately is, I will say that our airport is in a state of administrative crisis. Uh, that's to say that from a regulatory compliance standpoint with the Federal Aviation Agency, uh, or the Federal Aviation Administration, rather, um, we are nearing being out of compliance and in violation of several federal regulations. Uh, this is something that did not happen suddenly over the past few months due to the absence of the prior airport manager. Instead, what I've uncovered over the past 60 days or so is indicative more of years of uh, administrative either, either neglect or malpractice. I cannot speculate as to how the airport arrived at the situation that it is in. Uh, all I can do is tell you that objectively, uh, there are numerous issues from administrative standpoint as far as records, training, finances, and other things are concerned. And what I've been consumed with for the past 60 days is essentially trying to correct these issues, specifically working with the FAA, MDOT, and other regulatory bodies to make sure that our airport remains functioning and is not the uh, the target of any civil suits or enforcement actions on behalf of the FAA or MDOT. Uh, before you, I presented, I put together a package. I do apologize in advance for any type of graphical errors or any issues with this. Um, I was notified uh, late last night that I was, I was asked to appear before the board to, uh, this evening, but uh, what's in this package is the report that I did present before the airport advisory board back in November during my, or initial meeting, and in this package I went through, and I, or in this report, rather, I went through and identified several of the milestones and accomplishments that we, we accomplished at the airport in my first 30 days. As you can see, this is rather lengthy, there's a number of things that we did accomplish. Um, but more importantly, moving on to the section two on page two is the state of the airport, and I delivered this to the airport advisory board in kind of a State of the Union sort of format, in that I wanted to emphasize and share with members of the airport advisory board at the time, the discoveries that I had made regarding the, the regulatory issues at the airport. Uh, and in particular, um, what we're dealing with here in, in the broadest strokes possible, again, in respect of everyone's time, is, it is, it is years of promises unkept uh, to the FAA inspectors, uh, who have lost their patience with the airport. The FAA inspector I'm currently working with has no personal issue with me, we've actually built up quite a good rapport with one another, and we're working together very aggressively to try to solve these problems. Um, but there is a clear pattern administratively of the airport, um, either skirting violations or being near violation, out of compliance with certain federal regulations, and these are all coming to a head now. To kind of give you some perspective, um, the way generally speaking, uh, an FAA annual audit of an airport is supposed to work is prior to the actual auditor, the inspector showing up, they do something which is called an E-Docs review, where the airport manager's responsibility is to submit the myriad amount of training documents and records ahead of time to the FAA via a shared drive. Uh, if the airport manager's doing an adequate job, this really isn't that challenging of a task, it takes two to three days to put all these records together because in theory, an airport manager should be staying on top of the training and the maintenance and all the, all the different records throughout the course of a year, so it's really just a matter of consolidating these and forwarding them to the FAA. Once those records are forwarded, the inspector looks at all the E-Docs, and then they go through and they make any administrative comments, and they are, they arrive later then to do a physical inspection of the airport, which basically is uh, looking at the different markings, the signage, making sure that all the navigational aids of the airport function correctly, safety concerns, things of that issue. Ideally, an inspection shouldn't take very long, and after the inspection's completed, typically the, the manager and the inspector will shake hands, and if everything goes accordingly, the FAA issues what is called a, a letter of compliance, which basically means, we've inspected your airport and we found a few things that, you know, maybe you could tighten up a little bit, you can improve here and there, uh, but otherwise everything's looking great. Um, if, if the airport is suspected of not being in compliance with federal regulations, then the FAA issues what is called a LOI, or a Letter of Investigation. We are currently subject to one of those. Uh, the Letter of Investigation does not necessarily mean we're not in compliance, it is not indicative of legal action or regulatory action, but it basically, it's, it's a warning in a sense, saying, well, we went through, we did the inspection, we found these items where we suspect that the airport is not in compliance. There were a long list of items that the airport was on this list, that the FAA found over the course of the summer.
When was the LOI issued, sir?
The LOI was issued in July, yeah, and, and of June, beginning of July, and our response was also provided in July. Um, Ms. Young provided that response when she was acting as the interim airport manager. Uh, so, we are at that point right now, and in addition to that, there is a, a second administrative action that the FAA takes, which is called an EIR, which is an Enforcement Investigative Report. We are also under subject of two of those. Uh, one is related to the findings and the LOI, the other one is related to uh, a refueling system that we use at the airport that has been not in compliance for several years, since about 2021, or 2020, actually. Um, there is paperwork and supporting documentation in the packages I provided you that expands on all of this in detail.
So what you're saying is the FAA contacted us through the administration of that airport, or our previous administration, and issued that concern?
Yes, that's correct. This was under Ms. Newlin's watch as the airport manager. And I could tell you, based upon what I've been told, what's even more alarming is, I've ran you through the scenario of how an inspection should work. The prior airport manager, my predecessor, instead of submitting the electronic documents that she was supposed to submit, none of those documents were submitted to the FAA inspector ahead of the inspection as they should have been, and then she, she left her position. Uh, so when the inspector showed up to do the physical inspection of the airport, for one, he didn't have the documents, he never had a chance to preview them, he didn't have them in his hands, which understandably will put a bad taste in his mouth as a federal inspector, because he didn't have an opportunity to do all that. So that makes his job increasingly more difficult because now he has to go through and look at all the physical documents, he's here for a much longer period of time. Uh, compounding that was the fact that the airport manager had already left, and the two people standing in the inspection was Ms. Young as the interim airport manager, also serving as the county administrator at the time, which is a very difficult position to be in, uh, and we had newly hired the assistant manager, Robin Morrison, at that time, who had no previous management experience in this capacity. So the inspector was basically going through this inspection with two people who were doing their very best with the resources they had available, but, you know, it was not an ideal situation, obviously, very, very much less than ideal. Uh, compounding that also is the, the complete lack of organization and record keeping. Uh, I was pretty shocked, uh, in a state of disbelief, my first couple of days on the job. Uh, we have numerous missing records at the airport, which has forced us to go, go back and repeat training, generate new records. Um, half of my, half of my existence and time spent at the airport over the past two months has really been in investigative capacity, trying to uncover old records, trying to connect the dots, trying to figure out what we can do to solve these problems. So broadly speaking, that is my principal concern right now at the airport.
Is it safe to say that we are in a state of crisis, really in terms of our airport?
I, I would say that we are, i-if not in a state of crisis, we are, we are about to...
Enter one.
Enter the, enter a state of crisis, uh, because th- these items, these issues that we are supposed to comply with, some of them are repeat discrepancies that have been addressed in previous inspections of the airport, some have been left over and unattended for several years, uh, and some of them, most notably the recent ones, uh, they were originally due and supposed to have been complied with on October 31st. The inspector, though, gave us an additional grace period because I had just started the position on October 10th, so he gave me to the Thanksgiving holiday break to get that done.
I have some questions, if I could.
Sure.
Now, this is for my understanding, and if any of the commissioners need assistance with this, please. Obviously, the federal government requires various types of trainings that take place.
Correct.
Uh, that our employees would have to do.
Correct.
Um, and you're saying that we are in violation of having not done these trainings, or we just didn't document the trainings, or uh...
We have, we have not documented the trainings for the most part, and in the eyes of the federal government, in the eyes of the FAA, if the training is not documented, it is very much synonymous or the same as the training ever having been done.
So that there is no uh, physical affidavit at the airport, or no evidence of these trainings?
Correct. And what we've been doing, actually, Ms. Young started this process when she was acting as the interim manager. Her and Robin, along with the help of some of the other airport staff, uh, basically spent a, a lengthy period of time trying to recover these records and supplying them to the FAA to provide them evidence that the training was conducted, but...
Was there any luck?
There, there was. Some of, some of the records were recovered, uh, if I had to put a number on, though, I would say probably half, and that's being optimistic.
In terms of training that we cannot document, how far does that go back?
Uh, typically, the gaps in training extend back to 20, early 2021 is where we begin to see the real drop-off in the documentation and the record-keeping process.
In that amount of time from then to now, were we, as a county, through the airport administration, were we notified by the FAA saying, or is this go on on a semi-yearly, I mean, what's the...
It's done on an annual basis, uh, but my, my perspective is this, and I use this analogy when, when trying to explain this to uh, some coworkers at the airport. As a parent, uh, if I, if I go into my kid's room and I want to keep my kid's room clean, you know, I poke my head in the door from time to time, and if the bed's made and the dirty clothes are all taken care of, I poke my head in and then I leave, I'm satisfied. But if I see some dirty clothes on the floor and the bed's not made, then I start poking around, I might start opening drawers, I might go looking in the closet to see what else, what else I can find. I think in the past, uh, the necessary documents, or most of the documents, were provided in somewhat of a timely basis, um, or at least by the deadline, which, when the FAA inspector gets what they want, they do kind of a cursory glance, you know, they of course want to make sure all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, but they don't dig. Uh, in the case of this last inspection, given the nature of the inspection, how the entire thing transpired, understandably, the inspector was very frustrated, had serious concerns about the administrative condition of the airport, how the airport was being managed, so he, I believe, went and he dug as deep as he could and found a laundry list of issues that were probably, probably may have been, you know, building upon prior issues in the past. But I, I could tell you, there is a significant uh, absence, uh, it's almost like um, a vacuum of uh, records just having completely disappeared or not being kept up since uh, early 2021.
Okay.
If I may.
Yeah, please.
Um, I guess one of the questions, and you and I have talked on a couple of occasions already.
Yes.
Um, were we uh, in danger of being fined or the airport being shut down, and are we still in danger of that?
Fines and the revocation of an airport's operating certificate, which is the airport being shut down, it are, are possible eventualities. However, there are a number of steps that would have to occur in between where we are now and then. Um, the FAA does not want to shut airports down, the FAA is not in the business of shutting airports down, this is something that neither party benefits from. Uh, I'm sure if you spoke to any uh, representative from that agency, they, they would certainly tell you that. Um, but the um, the process typically is where we are, we, we have the administrative notifications. The next step from here is if we cannot comply by all, with all these issues in the time allotted, which is the end of the calendar year, then there are informal proceedings that could be held, litigation, uh, if things are not resolved in those proceedings, then we face the potential of civil fines and revocation of the operating certificate.
What do these fines look like?
Uh, I, I couldn't speak to that, uh, as far as an amount standpoint. I've never been subject to those fines before, I just...
That's good.
It's, it's, I just, the idea of it's enough to keep me up at night.
Commissioners, any other questions, please, for Mr. Randstadler? You'll agree.
In talking with you uh, previously and looking through the report that we have, there was some mention of uh, income that had been, we had missed out on over the past couple of years.
Yes, that's correct.
I'm sorry, there was some income that we had missed out, missed out on in, over the last couple of years.
Yes, that's correct. So the airport has several operating accounts, uh, one of the accounts that the airport also manages is called the PFC account, which stands for Passenger Facility Charge. Uh, this is a charge, um, it is $4.50 that is charged per passenger by the air carrier. Uh, and this is done across the country, all air carriers do it. The idea is that this $4.50 charge that each passenger, when they buy a ticket, when they, when they make this purchase, that money is collected by the air carrier, and on a monthly basis, it is forwarded to the airport. And then the airport then places this in a separate account and is authorized to use the money to offset the cost, these revenues there are generated by passengers, they use the money to offset the cost of federal improvements, airport improvement grants, different projects, things of that nature. Um, there are many stipulations and regulations associated with how this money can be used, but the general rule of thumb is that uh, Passenger Facility Charges can only be used for non-revenue generating projects. So we couldn't, for example, use this money to make terminal improvements because that would, you know, increase our revenue, but we could use it, for example, to purchase a new lawnmower, or we could use it to purchase a, a new snowplow, or something of that nature. Typically choose to offset the cost of those really large, high-dollar projects, um, such as remarking of uh, aircraft runways, things of that nature. Um, well, uh, my, my second week on the job with the, with the assistance of our assistant manager who handles a majority of our financial stuff, she is mostly accounting the airport, we discovered that our PFC account had been in a non-collection status uh, since 2020, since November of 2020. And what that means for us is if you figure we have 10,000 passengers per year, which is our magic number, of course, that we want to continue to maintain, 10,000 employments per year, 10,000 passengers, uh, at $4.50 a passenger, uh, you know, you multiply that by four years, that's, we're not collecting, we basically missed out on $180,000.
What's the protocol for collecting that? Is it filing paperwork?
The protocol is, of course, yes, filing paperwork, the account has to be audited on an annual basis, and the account also, you have to have a, a contract or a place to put the money. You have to, you have to proactively, as the airport manager, you have to proactively seek out those improvement projects, you have to coordinate with, or I would have to coordinate with MDOT and the FAA to make sure that those monies are being allocated correctly. Uh, failure to establish a contract or failure to use those funds appropriately can place the account in a non-collection or audit status. Right now, that account is at the highest level of audit status with the FAA up in Washington, DC, and um, we have a consultation company that is currently working to resolve that issue, and they have been for the past several months. Um, but it represents a significant loss of revenue that we could have spent towards airport improvement projects. towards airport improvement projects.
There's no way that could be?
Cannot recoup the money. It gets redistributed into a larger federal pot for discretionary funds that could be used across the country.
I have two thoughts that I'd like to share is, could COVID have played a part in this when everything was shut down? And what role should the advisory board know about all of these processes and procedures on oversight? Is there any capability there with, I mean, because some of them, board members, and I'm on that board, how are we to steer that, all of this information that, I remember a lot of this stuff coming up to the board. I just don't recall how we acted on it.
An advisory board advises as an administrative oversight?
Well, and that's what I'm, I'm mentioning, you know, what, what role does that board play in some of this stuff not being performed?
Well, I, I think, to answer your question about COVID, you know, 2020 possibly impacting stuff, I, sure, I could see it as a contributing factor, but not for this length of time. I mean, we're looking at a chronic issue. I could see it impact.
It's a start. It was the start of it.
Yes. I mean, and I, but I, in, this is, these, these record keeping issues and lack of compliance issues and just general lack of observing processes and programs and regulations. It's much more chronic and ongoing than it would have been for, you know, the, the time the pandemic was really at its height. So it may have triggered something, may have started something, but I, I don't see it as a justification or anything defensible as to explain.
The pandemic cut our numbers down, obviously, all over the country. But it had, the pandemic had nothing to do with how we meet the requirements of the federal government's regulations or how we do our own internal, you know, organization and housekeeping.
And as far as the position of the airport advisory board, I mean, it, in my opinion, it's in the name. It is an advisory board. The board is there to advise the airport management, to provide feedback and to provide advice and suggestions. Of course, as an airport manager, I welcome the backing and support of the airport advisory board when it comes to issues like this, to expedite actions and try to resolve matters as quickly as possible. But I, I was hired to be an airport manager for a reason. That's because you're placing your trust and faith in me to run this airport, which I have a vested interest in. And if me, as an airport manager, if I'm not communicating these issues to you, and I'm not doing my due diligence, then quite frankly, I'm not doing my job. And again, I can't speculate as to what my predecessor had gone through, what her processes were, what the situation was. But objectively, from my standpoint, there's just, there, there are too many gaps. There are too many leftover issues. There are too many things left undone to, I, I just, it doesn't make any sense to me.
Mr. Barron, do you have any questions?
Well, looking through some of the items, and there's, you had one item under land use and airport improvement. And it kind of stuck out to me that the Civil Air Patrol is unreachable.
That's correct. We have a building on the property that belongs to the Civil Air Patrol in that they have a sign out front. At one point in time, I believe the Civil Air Patrol may have been an active organization on the airport. After spending weeks sifting through files and trying to locate contact information for them, I did send an email out to a few individuals. I sent emails out to a few individuals. I made a few phone calls, left a few voicemails. I asked around with the general aviation population, the tenants that we have in the airport, and no one could definitively answer if they had seen the Civil Air Patrol recently. The building is in a good state of repair. It looks clean inside. I haven't actually entered the building myself. But for the most part, we haven't seen anyone come and go. No one's reached out to me, despite me trying to reach out to them. So I don't know if we still have a active wing of the Civil Air Patrol here in Delta County, if they're still utilizing that space.
It was active as 2010, 2012. Back when I got on the commission, I remember going in and seeing those guys, but I, I haven't seen them. Anything else?
Well, just, it struck me when I read this, and it struck me again this evening, because this, this is, as you said right from the beginning, this is not a good report. My, my beautiful bride has told me many times that the range of excuses is zero. And I, I, this, this, I think this falls right into that category. There's too much here that it's, it's, there's, I know Commissioner Yu has brought up COVID, but that, COVID didn't create this.
Correct.
This was already rolling before, before that really even did anything. So I thank you for what you brought.
Mr. Peterson, Mr. Yu, Mr. Melnay.
Is it going to take to get this thing going?
So the largest challenge we face right now is we have such a high volume, and there are so many things that we have to address simultaneously because of the timing of it. I came on in October. It's the end of the calendar year that's approaching. The FAA wants us to satisfy our compliance issues by the end of the year. Lots of leases for ground use issues and tenants at the airport using hangar spaces are coming due at the end of the year. There's just a, I could go on and on. There's a long list of things that all come to fruition at the end of the year that require a lot of attention. And right now, with myself and one assistant manager at the airport, we simply do not have enough hands. There is not enough time in the day to correct all these issues by the end of this calendar year. I have been focusing almost all my time exclusively on repairing the compliance issues. I signed on for this position because when I, when I wanted to help out the airport, I knew very well I was getting into a position where the airport needed some work. But I had envisioned myself coming in, addressing things such as, you know, how do we, how do we lower ticket prices for the citizens of the county? How do we increase the quality and the range of our passenger service? How do we get a new coat of paint on the airport? How do we improve the signage out front? How do we have it become a more active member of the community, become a more, you know, a more, a greater economic fixture in the community, things of that nature. For me, from my perspective, though, it's, it's very frustrating because all, all I've been able to do is work on these compliance issues. I, I can't focus my attention anywhere else because if these compliance issues are not satisfied, then we don't have an operating airport, and everything else at that point is moot.
Is there a triage method, for lack of a better term, regarding compliance? What can this, can this board do anything for you to help you meet that, I guess, immediate, those immediate needs? I mean?
Well, I, I made several recommendations in the airport advisory meeting that we held back in November that we were going to circle back and readdress during our next regular meeting next week, because I wanted to give the time, the board members' time to kind of absorb what we're talking about. But for, for one thing, the, we, we could use a, a surge in personnel, temporary personnel. I had recommended that we hire a temporary clerk to handle some, some of the more, you know, routine maintenance tasks that we deal with on a regular basis. I spend a great deal of my day scanning files, things of that nature, sorting through files. If we had a clerk to help out, that'd be fantastic. I also was interested in taking on a part-time advertising and marketing consultant. We've, we've lost out on revenue with potential advertisers and marketing entities because I just have not been able to give them due time or consideration because of all the other things that are going on. The, the thing that's very frustrating about this entire situation is, you, well, the, the job is not one that's done in a vacuum. We, we don't, the, the, Robin, the assistant airport manager and I, we, we don't walk into the office and lock the door and just sit down and work on paperwork all day. We are very much, we are, we're very happy to interact with the traveling public. We value our general aviation community. We, we really enjoy it when visitors come to the airport. We want to solve problems for people, want to help them out any way we can. And you just, you can't close the door on most people. And there's numerous phone calls and people that come through every day. There's, you know, there's some just short, pleasant conversations, some other things that need to be addressed immediately. And all those take time away from, you know, what we're trying to fix here. So really, it's just getting a few extra hands and people to help out. I had also suggested a fundamental restructuring of the airport staff in that I think our operations section deserves to have its own salaried manager, because the job that they do requires a certain level of subject matter expertise, and this ties into the training issue. If they had a salaried manager over there, and then the addition of a sixth person to help with working on, you know, doing the manual labor on the line, I think that would help with the continuity issue that we have at the airport. And when we come down to it, that's the real problem, is the airport, due to the, the turnover rate between airport managers and what we've seen recently, and the unfavorable circumstances under which the last airport manager left, I did not have the benefit of a face-to-face changeover. And as such, we lost control over all those processes. There was no continuity, building up relationships with different agencies and different local, local entities and things of that nature. You know, we, we still have, we still have files and issues in the office that after two months of being there, we still can't readily identify what they are. We're still receiving certain charges and certain accounts in the airport. We don't know exactly where they're coming from because we can't determine what's going on with that. It's just, it's mind boggling how much we have to uncover and unearth. It's really an investigative exercise in every, every sense of the word.
Anything else? I've got more questions, but please.
I, I have a lot of questions, but for the sake of our sanity and, and everything else, I will refrain from asking any more questions. What I will state, though, is that I have been out to visit the airport several times outside of board meetings. I've visited with Mr. Randstadler and, and, and Ms. Morrison. And I just want to say I'm very impressed with what you've done so far. I apologize for the fact that you had to come in under these circumstances. But you are, I, I feel that we, we got the right person, people in the right place at this time. And I will suggest shortly here that we bring some of your concerns to personnel and finance to see if we can get you some help.
Immediately, I would think, I mean, as far as helping. Is there anything we can do for you with the FAA to, to help you with your load, or is this totally out of our hands?
Well, I, I would say it's totally out of our hands, but there, I, there's no amount of, you know, correspondence or influence or anything that we could do to abate or otherwise change the course of the situation. I'm the primary point of contact with it. And it's, it's just, we are, we're operating on a, what is a legacy of, of like what I said, is basically unfulfilled promises. You'll, you'll notice in the packet that I gave you this, what you're going to be talking about here in the upcoming few minutes, this, this fuel shut-off system at the airport. This was something that was identified as being out of compliance at the airport back in 2021. It had been extended once, twice, and now on my watch, it's been extended a third time. That's because the manager, the previous manager, unfortunately, just didn't follow through with all the necessary steps to, to get this particular issue addressed.
Is this gonna, what's the cost of it? And are there, is there money currently at the airport accounts for that, or do we, do we need to pony up some cash?
The cost of the project is approximately $20,000, and it's to outfit our jet, our jet A, our aircraft fuel refueling system, the above-ground tank, and our aircraft fueling truck with equipment that is meant as if, it's an electromechanical failsafe to prevent the accidental overfilling.
How long does it take to come in? And do we need to contract with someone to get it installed?
Well, the, we do need to contract someone to get it installed. The parts take 10 to 12 weeks to come in. The request for bids that we put out, that you'll be discussing here in a few minutes, we have one company that's based downstate that has made an offer for that. I had dealt with a few companies prior to, prior to putting out the request for the RFP, rather, request for proposals, so we could, we could try to expedite the process. But it's just an example of the, some of the challenges we face in that this is a non-compliance issue, and it's not one of those things that we can do unilaterally. You know, it's not just a case of me sitting in the office doing paperwork. We have to put the request out for the proposals. We have to wait for the bidders to act upon it. We have to approve that, then we have to get back with the bidders. Then there's just supply chain issues with getting everything in place. It's just, it's a lot of issues like that that involve interacting with numerous external entities and external factors that considerably slow the process. And we're, we're working as diligently and as quickly as we can at the airport to.
In terms of the county, you know, externally, obviously, we have no influence there. But within the operations of the county, I, correct me if the board will, but if there's anything we can do to help expedite that, please advise, you know, because you've got enough challenges as it is.
Yes, sir. I, I would say, the one, one thought I would leave the board with is that we, we need to take swift, decisive action on this, and we, we need to be very, very forward-thinking on it. Because right now, and again, from administrative standpoint, myself and the assistant manager, we are operating in the past. We are exclusively focused on finding missed files, processing old invoices, reconciling old accounts, correcting old compliance issues. And what that is preventing us from doing is focusing on the present and planning for the future. So while I'm consumed with this stuff, I can't, I can't realistically plan for future success of the airport. And again, it's, you know, there are only so many hands to do the work. There's only so much time in the day.
Would it be a benefit if Administrator Young and one member of this board met with you on a weekly basis to help, not help you do your job, but help you things that might pop up and kind of get in your way?
I think what would be of, of, yeah, we, well, yeah, Mr. Young, we, we have a very, a very close professional relationship. She, I have, I have the good benefit because Administrator Young had filled the position as the interim manager, so she has a very solid perspective on what that job entails. She is literally a touch of a button away. And many of these issues that are outlined in this report, we have made forward progress on a lot of it. There are some, though, that we have not had a chance to address because, again, there, it's just the volume of, of things that we have to take care of.
In terms of training, is there anything we can do to help you with that financially? Or is this, I mean, where are we, so to speak, in the breeze with the feds in terms of training?
Training, the, the major concern is the delinquent training. The, I, I have to create and deliver several classes that are overdue for several of our personnel. And then I also have to produce some of the delinquent files. And because those files cannot, could not be recovered, we have to go back and repeat the training is the problem.
Have you interviewed the employees regarding the training? I mean, will that be of assistance to you, or have you spoken to them regarding this delinquent training?
Yes. And many of them do recall doing the training. Unfortunately, again, in the eyes of the FAA, if we can't produce the paperwork, it's as if it never happened. So in some cases, we go back and we do refresher training, and we go ahead and complete the necessary paperwork. In other cases, however, there was some training, specific requirements that were obvious to the, to the staff that the airport manager should have been aware of, and she should have incorporated that training into her normal training calendar. Unfortunately, it wasn't done, so we have to start from scratch on those issues.
And this is mainly security and, or is it safety issues, or?
It's primarily our aircraft rescue and firefighting training. It's airport-specific training. It's training where basically our, our aircraft rescue firefighter technicians, they receive the regional training that they're required to receive every year, which is very intensive live fire burn training. They know how to handle the equipment, they know what they're doing. But as from, from an administrative perspective, we're also supposed to provide training that familiarizes them on paper with our aircraft markings, the specifics of our airport, which of course they are familiar with. But again, the devils are in the details when it comes to the FAA and the documentation, and we do not have that right now. So we're working on.
Let me ask you this, in terms of our employees signing documentation or affidavits that they've trained. Have you, have you asked them about that? Did they sign specific affidavits that are not available? No?
We have pursued that to the maximum extent possible, actually. Administrator Young resolved a good deal of our training issues by submitting training affidavits and training memos to the inspector prior to my arrival. The remaining items are the most laborious to approach, which are the restructuring of, of original courses and delivering the training that's necessary.
Gentlemen? Now, that's a lot to ask. I mean, minds have got to be reeling.
Well, I think there's, you know, this is, like you said, a pretty extensive report that I have in front of me. And I've read through it already. But I think, like I said, to go through every issue would, we would, we would be here till next week, and you've got better things to do with your time.
Well, incorrect. And they are, I think our airport advisory board meeting was, we spent about two hours in there going over this. So, yeah, there, there's a lot here. It, just in brief, I will say that there are concerns outside of regulatory issues as well, such as, you know, physical security, land use and airport improvement issues, budgeting and accounting. All these things overlap, and they intermesh with one another. But the overall takeaway is it's, it's a lack of management, a lack of administrative oversight. Again, I can't speculate as to the cause or why or how it happened, but at some point, the ball was dropped.
I have one more point to consider, and Ashley, and sir, you guys could, is there a, could we institute a policy, right now, I'm not concerned about this, but moving forward, you don't know who's on the board, you don't know who's going to be in the airport, with our administrator going over an annual review with any department head, in this case, it's the airport, but conducting an audit of certain things that must be done and seeing if everything is copasthetic in that regard? Is that, is that a policy that could possibly be instituted for every department? In situations where we're dealing with the federal government, they don't have a desire to bend too much and, and, you know, accommodate. I mean, is, is that a naive concept, or do you think it sounds decent?
Well, I was, I, I can, I can appreciate the idea, but adding a, another layer of, another inspection process on top of something that we're already doing with the federal government, especially in the airport, area of airport management, which is very technical and nuanced, you're, you're, I would think you would have someone that would be coming from. You're, you're, I would think you would have someone that would be coming from the outside, so to speak, to provide oversight on the airport.
You misunderstood me. I, I probably didn't make myself clear. I apologize. I mean, um, inevitably there was a breakdown in communications, I assume, between our old administrator and the manager of that airport. What I'm wondering is if some type of activity, whether it's a simple checklist, I'm not talking about bringing the feds in again. I mean, you know, internally within Delta County, can a policy be drafted in any department, especially when we are dependent on federal regulatory approval? Is there something that we could come up with so this isn't happening is kind of where I'm going with that.
Well, at, at the airport, what there, what there should be, um, is there, there should be a binder or a source document that guides the airport manager and his or her duties. In addition to performing a face-to-face changeover, the next time that we have a new airport manager, whenever I leave this position, whoever the oncoming manager is, we should have a face-to-face. Should not be for a while, but we should have a face-to-face changeover. And ideally there should be a binder or a document that I turn over to that person that says, this is what I'm expected to do on a daily basis. This is what I should be doing on a weekly, quarterly, monthly, annual, semi-annual basis, et cetera. Uh, in this case, we walked into a situation where there's nothing like that in place whatsoever.
You answered my question very clearly. Thank you.
And you're probably going to get that started.
Uh, we're working on it right now, sir.
Do we know that when, you know, we've had a couple of different managers since you've been, do we know if, like you were saying, did one manager pass it on to another manager, what her responsibilities are? And you, you wouldn't know that at all, like that 450.
That would just be, I, I, that would just be speculation.
Is there any records anywhere saying that we collected that four years ago?
Collected what, I guess? What do you?
That 450 per passenger.
Yeah, we've, we've always collected it prior to 2020.
Yeah, there, there, there's a history of that account.
There is a history.
Yeah, there is a history, but.
Is that some ambiguous?
Yeah, because it's, it's actually a bank account. So there's transactions through deposits.
So my, my, why haven't we seen, why we haven't been collecting that?
My understanding, I, I think, and this is putting it together. And again, this is entirely investigative work trying to connect the dots. It came to my attention initially because when I finally, when I, when I got permissions to look at our bank accounts, I opened them up and I, I decided to look to see the, what the bank accounts looked. And I noticed that that particular account had not received any deposits for a very long period of time. And around about the same time that I noticed that, our, our consultant who deals specifically with how those funds are applied had also reached out to me. We did an introduction and they also noted this and well, you haven't used this in a long time. And, uh, what we had originally thought is that maybe there was a, a mistake or an accident. Maybe these funds were somehow getting erroneously placed in one of the airport's other accounts, which they shouldn't be. Maybe it was, they were getting placed in the operational account. Uh, once we verified that wasn't done, it was kind of just going back and, and it literally took about a week to figure out, you know, how this had happened. You know, who, who was physically delivering the checks to the airport manager? What was the airport manager doing with those checks? That we, we still, we don't know for sure. But I, I think what had happened around November 2020 is, uh, that was, that would be about the time of the year when, when, when the airport manager would renew a contract for the next fiscal year to apply those funds towards a new project. And I think that contract probably was not renewed. Uh, and after it was not renewed, it was, they just, the manager just lost track of it and never returned to that issue. And once it went into a period of neglect, then it went into a state of non-collection and that's, that's how we are now. And I think also maybe when, once it went into an audit status, I think I recall some members of the airport advisory board mentioning that they, they had heard and realized that it was an audit status, but I think they were under the impression that it was under a, a typical annual audit as opposed to a special investigative audit. And I don't think that that information was conveyed to them accurately or appropriately. It's probably what the problem was.
If I may, um, we've been talking at the airport, on the airport board and outside of the airport board about the airport becoming CIDA certified.
Yes.
How far is this going to set us back on becoming CIDA?
Well, CIDA is, it is separate, but it is also a related issue. I, I will say, um, for us to achieve the requirements of CIDA, we did have a consultant come in who specializes specifically, uh, especially in that, that transition from the type of airport we are now to a CIDA style airport. And he was very optimistic about us making that transition. He said we had the requisite infrastructure in place to make that transition. However, he had a very, he was only provided a very narrow view. I did not provide him with this report and everything else that we were competing with. I will say that we need to make, uh, from a physical security standpoint, we need to make tremendous leaps and bounds at the airport to get to a foundational footing to where we could then approach a transition to CIDA. Up until about six weeks ago, we did not even have fully functional cameras at the airport. So that was one of my priorities, one of my physical security concern issues. The cameras that we were using were not reliable. We have since had those cameras upgraded. We have 24-hour, 24/7 surveillance at the airport now, so I'm happy to share that. That's one of those wins, one of those victories. But there's a number of issues related to physical security, which unfortunately due to federal regulations, I can't completely discuss in an open public forum. But they need to be addressed and fixed prior to even entertaining the idea of moving to CIDA.
Can, can you just real briefly explain to the people what CIDA is?
Uh, so CIDA, basically the acronym, regardless of what we get into with that, it's, um, it's, it's a, it's a security process whereas we, it, CIDA stands for Security Identification Display Area. Essentially, anyone that's traveling around the airport in a CIDA area has to have a badge similar to what, what the county workers wear. It's a photographic badge. It has their name on it. It is the, the highest level of security that airports can attain in the United States. It is, and it's designed in such a way, it's based upon the type of aircraft that visit the airport on a regular basis, the passenger capacity of those aircraft. And generally speaking, the larger the passenger capacity of the aircraft, the higher, the, the higher the security requirements. So our, our objective, our goal at Delta County Airport is to improve our security posture up to the highest level, which is CIDA, so we can accommodate the largest possible aircraft that our airport can sustain so that we can have a more robust, uh, option of, uh, aircraft at the airport so that we can, we can, we can fly more often, we can meet travelers' needs, we can lower ticket costs, et cetera, et cetera. But there, the security component is a foundation of that and we have to upgrade to the highest security level in order to make that happen. And once we get to that level, you know, that's, we're doing, it involves background investigative checks. Some people applying for those positions. You have to maintain a series of files on them. So it's, it's a lot of work to, to get to that point.
Thank you so much. All right. Anybody else, please?
You're going to be hearing more from us. We need to thank you very much for your service. And, um, with that, we'll talk to you soon.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, any, uh, converse or discussion regarding this between yourselves or just move on to the next item? Move on to the next item, I'm sensing. All right. Department head updates would be closed. General orders of business. We have unfinished business and the civil attorney's stipend increase. This has been kicking around old business for a while, I would like to.
Yes, it is. Um, go ahead. It's just the same item that's been on our agenda for the past couple of meetings. I was able to contact Attorney Graham and Prosecuting Attorney Wickman about a policy. However, they have difference in opinion on the MCL 49.71. Attorney Graham's policy writes that the.
Clarify that, please. What is MCL 49.71?
That is the County Civil Attorney Employment Compensation. The, uh, section one, the Board of Supervisors of any county by a majority vote of the members elect may employ an attorney to represent the county in civil matters whenever the board determines that the prosecuting attorney is unable to properly represent the county. Such attorneys shall receive such compensation as shall be determined by the Board of Supervisors.
All right. Discrepancy in their interpretation of that?
Basically, Attorney Graham states that I can make the determination and report back to the Board of all referrals between if I'm going to go with prosecuting attorney or if I'm going to go with Attorney Graham. However, Prosecutor Whitman notes that she believes, um, the board must determine that the prosecuting attorney is unable to properly represent the county and approved by the majority. And then according to case law that she cited earlier, there has to be a reason that's associated with that.
I, I think we've met that criteria, gentlemen.
We have not made a actual motion on determination for a reason why.
We voted three to two to bring Mr. Graham on as our municipal attorney.
Correct. We just have to write a reason or state a reason at this point. And then this lays a rest.
Do we have that, uh, motion that we made from the last meeting?
That was from September the 19th.
No, I thought it was the last meeting too.
No.
No. Last meeting, we didn't do nothing because, uh, the prosecutor and Scott Graham were supposed to call each other. To talk to each other. And as far as I know, that did not ever happen.
Let me put this to bed if I can. If you don't let it go to bed, that's fine. I'm only one vote. But we've made a decision on who we want our municipal attorney to be. And this airport situation is a smashing example of why we need immediacy. Ashley can start the process. Everything immediately should go to MMRMA because technically that's free. If they refuse it, then, um, she can send it to Graham or if she wants Lauren to do something, that's fine. But, you know, we made a decision on who our municipal attorney should be. I understand it was somewhat of a split decision, but it's still a majority of the board. I'm not, I don't have a problem kicking her another six grand. I mean, that's fine.
But I, I look at it as our prosecutor should be the first on the agenda. And she makes the decision if she don't want it or if it's too much work for her, then our other attorney can grab it.
I, I, I understand what you're saying and I respect that, but I, I wholeheartedly disagree. But that's, that's fine. We can, go ahead, Steve.
If, from, from what I understand, Ashley and, and conversations that I've had, that the first choice should always be, um, MMRMA. And if they take it or not, then, then we decide whether it goes, which way it goes from there. But the first, the first thing, because if we, if we give it to Lauren or we give it to, uh, Scott Graham and they run with it and moves, we're on the hook. If we go to MMRMA first and they, and they will not cover us if we, if we go to MMRMA, turn it down, then decide which way it goes from there. And that's talking with people down in, when I was down in Kalamazoo, that's when, and talking, uh, with Attorney Graham and, um, about several people, but that's, that's kind of general order where it should go.
Graham wants it to go to MMRMA first, so that way if they refuse it, you know, we've at least expanded that option of possibly not spending money.
Can, can I?
Please.
Mr. Chair, can we have that motion that passed three to two on the order of how we're supposed to proceed?
I think we had a motion that brought Scott on as our municipal attorney. I don't know that we passed.
No, no, but there was an order. There was.
It was, I have it ready.
Okay, all right. I stand corrected. I'm sorry.
Motion by Commissioner Peterson and second by Commissioner Barron to restructure council request to Attorney Graham, then Myrma and then the prosecuting attorney.
So then we would go to Myrma.
And that was for, let's see, yeah, three, two.
What, what date was that, Ashley, if I may ask, please?
These are the minutes of September 19th of 2023. These are the proposed. I do not believe there were any corrections made.
Okay, what, what, one thing that I did a little research on is Myrma. They must be given every litigated case or filings that happened on the county to oversee prior to anything else happening. It's automatic.
I agree.
The daily questions that employees, administration, counsel, you know, the vanilla stuff. Well, that's, that's a.
You slay me.
Plain vanilla, you know, you just, you just need an answer on this and that. I still believe that we should use our, um, legal office, the prosecuting office as we have in the past. And I, I would like to move that we rescind the motion passed on the September 19, 2000 meeting relating to the order of who is best positioned to speak on the legal concerns of the county. Not to change any of the legal stuff we have to do, but just the, uh, order of how we operate that. I, I just, I would like, I make that motion to rescind that.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. So we have discussion. Mr. Peterson?
I could, I could accept, um, consideration that it goes to Myrma first, then comes back and, uh, our administrator.
Makes the decision.
Makes the decision of whether it would go to, uh, our prosecutor or to Scott Graham.
I don't have a problem with that at all. I mean, it's, you know, send it to Myrma. I mean, that, that, that's pretty much what we're obligated to do. And then we need to trust our administration enough to, uh, decide what she wants to do with the particular issue. I mean, there's a myriad of issues.
We're discussing something that I'm not even asking to be part of the discussion of, I just want to change the order that we made on that motion, that it goes to Graham then the insurance company and then to our legal department. I wanted to just eliminate that order. We, we can still have Graham represented, whether I supported him or not. We can still have More, Myrma do what they need to do when we have litigation or papers filed against us. And we can do the daily stuff that we just can do a phone call or walk across the hall to ask a specific question to the prosecutor. All of that was eliminated when we made this motion. I, I'm not changing how we get representative on whatever issues we're talking about. I just don't want to have to follow this procedure. So I'm asking to rescind the procedure that we do and that's it. Not that we could send Myrma stuff or, or, uh.
Well, clearly we need to have something clarified tonight. So, I mean, if.
That's why I'm rescinding it. Asking for, you know, that's my, that's my motion to have the board consider, not to change any of the way we legally go about trying to get representation on anything, but not to follow that.
Let me be, uh, let me hypothetically put something out. So hypothetically, let's say we, we strike that little thing down. Okay? Would the board support, A, all issues go, first of all, the administrator? The administrator would send it to Myrma. If they bounce it back, then the administrator would make the decision whether it would go to Graham or locally. Is, is that something you would support or is that, do you want something more?
I, I don't think we need to do that. I talked to the Myrma representative. I just called up as a commissioner and I talked to the local representative in Nagani and he said that.
There needs to be structure here.
There's like a 30 or 40 page document, because I asked him, I said, send me the documentation. He said Ashley has it in the office somewhere or somehow. You can read what the requirement is for our county to be insured by them, how we proceed.
Ashley, what is your understanding of this if an issue hits your desk right now?
Right now, if an issue came, um, I would figure out if it was a claim or a notice to claim. And then that's when I would proceed to send it into Myrma. There is a structure of what Myrma will cover. They sent me the information probably within the first month of me being interim. If it applies to that, I send them a notice, um, or a claim. It depends on which one it is. If it does not, then I have to direct to Attorney Graham right now.
And that's what I'm trying to eliminate, Mr. Chair.
Do you need the, um, do we need to, if we restructure this or strike it down, would it, um, be a benefit if we, there was a caveat put in there saying that, uh, you could rescind it to either Graham or Lauren based on?
If you rescind this structure, we already have our rules and procedure. We already have, um, that I have the authority, um, the board gives me the authority to utilize the services of legal counsel as required by the daily operations of county business. of legal counsel as required by the daily operations of county business without board approval. So that would give me discretionary. However, if I were to go outside of the prosecuting attorney, I would need board approval in our determination of why we are not utilizing prosecuting attorney. But I also believe with that fact, that is going to be a large issue where it's going to be at the board level anyways. Majority of the time, what I'm going to utilize prosecutor attorney Whitman for is going to be in my day-to-day operations, contract jargon, stuff like that.
Green stuff.
Yes.
Mr. Barron, do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I, uh.
Well, that's what it's.
Could you, Nancy, could you restate what actually the motion and second are?
Okay, moved by Commissioner View and seconded by Commissioner. Okay, moved by Commissioner View and seconded by Commissioner Melner to rescind the motion of September 19th, 2023 regarding order of counsel.
I do have some issues with that in that, I understand the MMNRA and we had passed that with the intention that Attorney Graham would direct that to whether it was for the MMNRA or potentially could be used by our prosecutor. And the disagreement that I'm hearing with the prosecutor, Mr. Graham, is a, a reason why we are having our corporate counsel. I think, being on the finance committee and then going through the budgetary process, our prosecuting office has been shorthanded for a considerable period of time. And the, and I've said this before and I'll say it again, that the prosecutor prosecutes. These issues with municipal law are, I believe, needed with someone that this is what they do. Makes a big difference on, if you're doing something continuously. And I believe that the, the time and experience with Mr. Graham are much further, much more profitable in that area than prosecutor who's prosecuting. That's their job, is to prosecute. Not, not an issue with that. So if there's, if that's a reason that's, that would be a reason not to use the prosecuting attorney. That's what they're looking for, the prosecutor is looking for, fine, that, that would be a reason. And as far as the motion to rescind it, then we are starting back to saying, well, what are we going to do? And we're talking about, well, we will, it will come back to the administrator. Well, the administrator makes the decision that we have a legal matter and it has to go someplace anyway. They're already making that decision when it goes, and I believe if there's a change to be made, is that it goes to MMNRA, which my understanding is the, Attorney Graham is saying that should be the case anyway, so. And then it, I believe, if it's there, it's not taken there, then it should come to the our municipal attorney. And if his determination is to go to, that the prosecutor can handle this issue, that would be the case. And, because I, I believe we, we need that, that the administrator, Ashley, would be, that step that she takes is to forward it to MMNRA. And then these other steps take, come into play.
Getting out in front of what you just said, she currently has the ability to shoot something to Lauren, I mean, not every issue should go to MMRMA, obviously. So, I mean, she's already got that ability, correct? She can.
No, not now.
No, not now.
No.
This, it's the, it's, we've already set, we said, we put Attorney Graham first. Well, that was, it looks like, well, we should be just shifting, put Attorney Graham second. The administrator has the, has the, says that this has to shift into the legal aspect of it, MMNRA, and then from there, it's got its own steps right through.
If I may. So according to what you said, any issue that we do not use the prosecuting attorney on, we have to write her a written reason why we didn't use her on each.
I have never heard of that before.
Oops, sorry. That's what she stated during case law, when she, Prosecutor Attorney Whitman said in case law, was that there had been a determination. But it does have to be by majority. That is in the statute that I had read earlier.
So, so even if we have a majority that says we want this to go to Scott Graham, we still have to write her an explanation?
That's what she stated.
When we had Burkhart working for us, you know, 2010, 2012, 2014, did that. And so I'm, you know, are, are we in violation of a statute? I, I asked about clarification on that. I don't believe we are. So I, I think the very fact that, I try to keep personalities out of this. When you say the prosecuting attorney's office is not adequate for a particular subject matter, it doesn't spread a net of inadequacy over all legal proceedings. But you don't, if you need a heart transplant, you don't see a proctologist, do you? I mean, you know, that's a little extreme in, in the comparison, but, I mean, that's what I'm, I'm getting at right here. I've never heard of this. And we went out, we used to spend 150, 180 grand a year with Burkhart, as I remember, but we, we got it, the money back. I mean, it was an investment.
I, a third party, maybe not even Scott Graham, maybe somebody completely different that would tell us that that's the way it's got to be because there's a discrepancy between what Mr. Graham says and Attorney Whitman. And I, I really, I really want to know for sure.
Well, the statute that Ashley had indicated, it says under statute that we can pretty much do what we want to do. So I, unless I, I am no legal scholar, obviously, but if we have been violating statutes since, we really didn't start doing this until Phil, Phil Strom, when Judge Parks was the prosecutor, he didn't do any of this. I mean, you know, we, we changed, I think, our tenure and our tone to try to save some money.
Mr. Chair, can I repeat something again?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think we're getting off track on a lot of the issues on how we're going to represent the people in the best interest of the county. Let me read my motion one more time, and then I'm going to call for, for a vote. I, I don't think we should discuss it because we're losing track of what I've asked for. I move to rescind the motion passed at the September 19th, 2023 board meeting relating to the order of who is best positioned to speak on legal concerns of the county. Just the positioning of it, not anything else.
Okay, and if we do strike down that, if we do rescind that, what then?
Everything that we've all talked about and discussed right now is in process with Ashley having, what, up to $2,000 worth? I mean, I don't know all the rules. I can't remember them all. But it just goes back to what we had prior to saying Graham will be first, MMNMA will be second, Whitman will be third, that order. I just don't want that positioning done so that we can utilize, even I can utilize a local attorney on just a plain item that I need a little advice on. And all the commissioners and our administration and supervisors. Because right now, they can't talk to Lauren about this. She can't give any advice. And I just want to eliminate that.
You should be talking to Ashley about it. I mean.
Well, whatever. Yeah, they'd go through Ashley, but you, you get the gist of what I'm trying to do here, I hope. And then, and I call, I, I, I call, what do you call it?
You called a question.
I called a question.
We would have to vote on that.
Because we're just going to, you know.
So the, the question has been called. Do you have a support for that?
I'll support.
Okay. It's been called by Commissioner View, supported by Commissioner Melner. This should effectively end debate. Roll call?
Melner.
Yes.
View.
Yes.
Barron.
No.
Peterson.
No.
And Moya.
No. I'm, I'm still, go ahead, if you have questions, jump in.
I just, I would like to follow that up with another motion.
Okay.
I would make a motion.
Okay. Wait now.
We got to vote.
There was a motion on the floor. There was a motion on the floor and a second regarding the rescension of, of the September 19th.
Oh, okay. I'm, I'm sorry, I lost track.
We can still debate, we can still debate it. It was, so go ahead.
No, it was called, it was called a question. There is no debate right now, right?
No, we're back in debate.
Oh, back in debate. So, let's hypothetically see what your question, or.
All right. Well, what, what I was going to say is, I see two ways to go on this. And I think that maybe what I had mentioned earlier is anything that would involve litigation first goes to MMRMA. Everything else goes to Ashley for her determination on which way it should go.
Okay, if we did that, we would have to rescind the September the 19th.
Yep.
I have no problem with what you just said. Can the rest of you guys support that?
It's just discussion.
Yeah, it's just discussion. So we're basically, we'd be putting our faith in our administrator as to, you know, to how she wants to direct traffic, legal traffic, that is.
So the commissioners have to go to Ashley, too? I'm, I'm just hypothetically.
Well, I would hope we would.
If I have an issue with something and I just want a quick response to something, so.
I think going to our administrator.
Well, I do go to her, but I'm just saying, if I, I, I don't have the authority just to utilize our local legal counsel. Would you want that authority to go there?
I think if you wanted to go see the prosecutor and talk to her about an issue, you'd be more than, within your right to.
Yeah, but she, she wants to feel comfortable, that, that office comfortable in being able to answer me. And that's why I, I made this motion, just so that we can get back to that level of representation where we have that, she can answer us. Right now, Ash, can I ask?
Do I need to re, can I recess the meeting for five minutes so people can use the bathroom? Would that help?
Well, let me ask one question first, because I have to go, too, but. My train of thought. I'm, I just wanted to know if that would be beneficial for Ashley and the department heads to, to go back to the way we used to do it, not change anything else. Graham's our attorney, MMR, it's mandatory to give them all the litigation on paperwork and stuff like that to decide.
Are you just asking for like their day-to-day legal?
Yeah.
Or a little?
Guys, it's quiet. I need it quiet in the audience, please.
I mean, wouldn't that be a benefit for, for the whole county to be able to just walk in there and say, hey, what about this or this?
Right.
Instead of her saying, I have no authority to answer that.
I, I actually don't even make the walkover.
Folks, I need it quiet in the audience, please.
This is the policy, so.
Okay. Well, that's what I'm trying to get back.
Right.
To where, when we made this motion, I, I had more thought on it and decided that I don't think it would be good for me wanting to know some minor thing and being able to go talk to her and she would have to tell me, I can't answer that. You have to go to Mr. Graham, according to what that motion was. That's all I'm saying.
I have no problem rescinding that motion and putting it into effect with.
It doesn't change nothing else. It doesn't change nothing else. It just changed the order. It, it doesn't really change anything else.
I, I don't care to go back to the way it was.
Okay.
I, I believe we needed corporate counsel and the corporate counsel's been very important his, these recent events. It's going to be.
This doesn't disagree with corporate counsel, Mr. Barron.
But the, the way it was didn't have corporate counsel. And, and that's what you've said. And the, I, we're better served with having the expertise of Mr. Graham there right now. And if the prosecutor needs a reason, I, as far as Commissioner Peterson saying that, do they need a reason? Do we have to give a reason every time we do something like that? I don't think that was the case. I think the case is we gave a reason why we're using it the way we are, and that's our policy going forward. We don't have to come each time and say it because that would be a redundant situation over and over and over again. That's not, when we make a decision, it's made, it's a decision is made. I believe we, we, we got to tweak what we've already have out there to, with MMNRA as the first area, and then put the steps through that Attorney Graham. And then if there's something that is minor that he wants, thinks that the prosecutors should cover it, we're giving a stipend for this, so be it. But this, and the way it was, is people were, people in the county situation here, the staff, they were contacting Lauren whenever. And it wasn't going, very little of it was going through the administrator, according to Attorney Whitman herself when she was speaking here about this. That was in the last, last meeting. So, and so that needs to be clarified. The administrator needs to know these issues that are taking place because that's part of, being part of the administration. You know, we, we had a situation that unfortunately, airport here, that there should have been some things that, well, the fortunate part was that Ashley was interim airport manager for a short time and picked up on, on some of these different items. There needs to be a way where that, some of that information that's critical for that on that airport situation going forward, that the administrator knows this.
So do you see a restructuring of this policy or just leave it be?
I would, I would look at a restructure of MMNRA as, I believe, Mr. Graham is in agreement with it should go there first, then have it come to him second. And that way, the administrator, that, that's taken care of. Once she makes the determination it has to go before this, then it goes through those steps.
So we would, we, we would vote in the affirmative on Mr. View's motion that would kill the old policy. We would reestablish a new policy of what you just said or what Mr. Peterson just said. Am I correct with that?
Well, yes, that would, if, I'm still, Steve read his, his motion and Nancy's read the motion, the two aren't quite matching, yours.
No, that's why I read exactly what I said the first time. And I'm, and I'm sure Nancy's got it, got it right now because I, we're, the, the point of order is we're talking about all kinds of other issues and not what I actually made the motion on. We're discussing things that are not relevant to the motion at this point.
Well, but you've said that you want to go back to the way it was.
Rescind the order of who is best positioned to speak on legal concerns of the county. The order, Graham, get permission from Graham. This is how I understand it. Correct me if I'm wrong. Any issue that comes up in the county, regardless of how minute, minor or huge it is, Mr. Graham needs to be contacted. He will disseminate to Ashley who best can do it. Him, Myrma, which Myrma said they have to be contacted at anything that, it's already a standard policy in our insurance thing. There's a whole manual on when we recognize them automatically to be covered with insurance. So that's already established. And then after Myrma, Graham can say, well, that's something Lauren can handle. That, that's, that, that's what that motion on September 19th did.
Right.
Am I correct?
Correct. And actually, Attorney Graham cannot assign anything to our prosecuting attorney.
No, he doesn't want to.
No, but I mean, he would say, well, she can handle that. I mean, that's basically.
Not interested in this is what he's.
But that can't be done. Prosecuting attorney Whitman cannot take that, then.
Right. So I, I just want to rescind.
So.
I'm asking you, if, if we rescind this, what, if you could give me the skeletal structure of a policy that would make your job easier, what would it be?
Just rescind the motion?
Yeah.
And then it would just go back to the way it was. However, like I said before, if, the board can always motion to make, to utilize Attorney Graham at any time.
Any attorney.
Any attorney outside.
Any.
They can supersede any decisions that I make as administrator. And if I choose to go outside the prosecuting attorney, that needs board motion also. That's how it's, if you rescind this motion, that's how it's going to move forward.
Right now, it goes right to Mr. Graham first, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Well, if, instead of rescinding, I would, as I've stated, I would like to see this, rearrange it with the order, with MMNRA first, then Mr. Graham, and then the prosecuting attorney. In some respects, do we?
We would have to vote on Mr. View's motion first or he'd have to withdraw.
Well, I'm just, I'm in the discussion here, but I would just assume, do we even need to use the prosecuting attorney?
Why not?
Have we been down this path before? This is philosophical.
Yeah, we're not talking about.
We're just going.
I, I think that, Mr. View's phrase, the, the vanilla stuff, I don't think Mr. Graham even wants to see that, really. Or, and, and I'm, I know he would, but. Um, or, and, and I'm, I know he would, but the day-to-day, I guess, I guess the day-to-day, I, I don't have a problem with going to Lauren. So, so I guess, I guess in my opinion, uh... The order of things, you know, like you were saying, Mr. View, if you wanted to stop in and talk to her, um...
Not abuse it, though.
Not, no, no, of course not, but I think that, uh, I think that beyond that, uh, it goes to MMRMA, and, uh, then our administrator, on, on bigger issues, it goes to MMRMA first, then our administrator decides where it goes from there. On the bigger issues, not the everyday vanilla stuff, but...
There has supposed to be a policy to determine what is vanilla, you know, and what's strawberry or chocolate.
Papers filed is not vanilla. When you get a, when you get legal documents served, and you're the defendant, that, there's something happen.
Majority of the time, it's gonna be at the board level anyways, and it's gonna need board action for, uh, litigation services and so... For legal services.
And I'll repeat, Mr. Chair, one more time, that if we keep this policy of September 19th, every issue that comes up that we may need some type of advice or counsel by anyone on the board, by the administration and all, all staff, that goes to it, to our administrator, Mr. Graham would be contacted and the billing of that first step would be at his rate, and I don't know if it's a minimum. Is it an hour, half hour, or what? I don't know.
He, um, he hasn't socked it to us yet, has he?
Not yet.
No, I haven't paid a bill.
No, you haven't, and he's been, um...
No, but that's not the issue. Eventually down the road, it could become an issue.
I think if it was an issue, it would have surfaced by now.
Well, I think we should take a vote.
Well, I, all right, roll call, clerk.
No, is this...
This is on View's motion.
This is to rescind.
This is Mr. View's motion.
I'll read it again. Review, uh, in motion to rescind the motion passed at the September 19th, 2023 meeting relating to the order of counsel.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Melner?
Yes.
View?
Yes.
Barron?
No.
Peterson?
Um... I'm gonna say yes.
Anne Wayans?
No, so now that we've rescinded this, what is your pleasure?
I would like to make a motion.
All right, hold on, John. Five-minute recess so you can use the toy toy?
It's confusing as hell. Well, I mean, people both know. I was a little confused, Steve.
I missed out. I disagree. It's because she's got her nose out of whack. She's got her nose out of whack.
What would she say? She missed. The money thing is why Danny, the issue, the money coming out of the tunnel, I was in position. Budgets, one penny, one s million, she's... It takes all that funding away from, away from the companies. That's already good to hear. Do you mind, right?
She's the pleasure.
Yeah, exactly, like, why we want to go down this path, because now what keeps happening is we pay the politics, $1,000 budget. It's not a rule to... One person would open a budget crisis, spending that $8,000, it's turned down, and it's, it was $500,000. It's gonna come down this greater now, bro. This would, this would be more, I mean, this would be something, maybe not regular budget, but, you know, this is December, it's probably on the third party. Second, I'd say that, I don't know. And, I mean, budget, one, two, three, that doesn't allow us to run programs that are seen across the earth in their county. We have to, we have to reduce budgets, so...
Right.
It's saying that, it's saying, you know, what's it, this is what you want, it's just something that's not... Because you're so... Red, okay, by, uh, yeah. Okay, half our experience, it's part. If it is, if it is, they can wipe it out. They go on 10 minutes. They don't, they don't, they don't, that's just hyperbole. We see it all the time, like, advertising, like, I hear so many, now that they have a, like, you, I think that's produced. I had, I had a budget for, like, I would like to add it, but, but it's... Uh, is it, is it possible, yeah, yes, why not, it's probably there for the entire model, and now we're here, next to your later model. I'm not gonna go to the supporting, you know, like, you see, we're really expecting, trying to, like, watch this.
I'm...
We're waiting on Commissioner View. We are back in session, folks. Start heading back to your seats. Waiting on Commissioner View before I can call us back into session. I don't want to... Trying to be... Very good. We are back in session. Our microphones are hot again. The recess was acceptable to you. All right, so we still have, we have rescinded that motion. We still need a structure regarding how we proceed with issues legally.
I would, I would actually like to make a motion, and I don't, like I said, I really don't want to delay this anymore, but I want to get another opinion because I've had, we've had two or three different opinions on having to give, state a reason why we're not using a prosecuting attorney. We've got one from Mr. Graham that's different than, than our prosecuting attorneys. I, I've talked to another retired attorney that does civil work. His, his opinion kind of goes along with Attorney Graham. I would like to have this meeting to whoever wants to talk to whoever to get an opinion on that because that's going to be a big factor in how I vote.
Gentlemen? If you make a motion, that's fine. You could need a...
I, I make, I make a motion that we table this for one more meeting. Like I said, I do not want to, but I just don't have the, the legal expertise in it, and I want, and like I said, we've got differing opinions. I want to get that cleared up.
Have a motion on the floor?
What are we tabling?
Well, we've done so far.
Oh, we haven't...
No, no, we're not. We, we've rescinded it. We've rescinded the, the policy. Now, before we set anything else in motion as far as who we, the order of what we do, how we do it, and, and whether we have to go to learn every time we want to use Mr. Graham or whoever, I want to know whether we've got to give a reason why we're doing it. I don't, I don't believe that we would have to do that, but I want to know for sure.
So you want to find out if we're in violation of an MCL statute?
Correct.
Commissioner Peterson, the, you stated yourself that we have two different opinions from two different attorneys.
Yes.
Okay, the only way you're going to get a clarification on that is in a court of law. I would, I would state that the, that we need to take care of this. I would say that we will keep, if we get three opinions, ones on one side, ones on the other, then the third one comes in and joins in with one side. That's going to solve it. It's not. It's, it's, it's still an opinion. It's opinion from, from different legal counsel. And you said about the retiree that, in municipal law. Okay. That is a positive thing, but you don't get the final decision because if, if attorney's opinions were always correct and they, they, then we wouldn't need, we wouldn't need courts.
I, I agree. I understand.
Okay, well, then what we're doing is, there'll be maybe, you know, the best two out of three or maybe three out of five or whatever. I think we need to make a decision that, okay, we, yes, we've rescinded the order. All right, fine. And there's, but a potential motion. You've put something forward, but I would ask you to reconsider here that the, to put the policy back in play of MMNRA because that is part of what our insurance calls for now as it's been clarified. And then the, if MMNRA decides that it does not meet their criteria, then we'll put this burden on the administrator.
And she will decide.
And to, whether it should go to the Attorney Graham or it should go to attorney, to the prosecuting attorney.
Close enough. I will rescind my motion.
Well, then would, what I just stated, would you, I would make that as a motion?
Commissioner Peterson.
I would support.
Okay, so Commissioner Barron moves, Commissioner Peterson supported, I'm going to try to paraphrase this. Stop me if I go astray. That the official policy of the Board of Commissioners would be items go to MMRMA as per their instructions. If they're bounced back on a, whatever, it's not going to be a claim or it's not something that they want to represent, then our administrator would determine the path of assistance from either Mr. Graham or Ms. Wickman. Is that...
That's correct.
Don't do that to me. All right. I will, do I need to repeat this?
Well, I, I would like to, Mr. Chair, if I could have the policy that we are under right now read to us.
We have no policy?
Yes, we do.
In terms of what, sir? This is like trying to pull one noodle out of a bowl of spaghetti.
Ms. Young, do we have a policy on this right now?
In the event a county commissioner deems that the service of legal counsel is necessary, county board approval is required prior to contacting the attorney. Additionally, the county board authorized the Director of Administration and Finance to utilize the services of legal counsel as required by the daily operations of county business.
That's our policy right now.
Yep. Rule of procedure 4.52235.
And how does that interface with what has got us to this extremely confusing juncture?
We keep trying to change things. Seriously, we, we, we need to know what we're working with before we try to change what we're working with.
What's your pleasure? I've already told you.
Well, we got a motion, so...
We have a motion and a second, and we are engaged in additional discussion.
Would that, Mr. Chair, could I ask?
Please, please, please.
The administrator, would this motion change that policy at all or how it would be utilized? Or would it correspond with this policy?
Correspondence. Excuse me. Correspondence. I make up words.
No, but I, I just wanted to make a note again that if I proceed to go outside of prosecuting attorney Wickman, I do need board approval.
So...
I cannot make that determination on my own. That is according to statute.
Who is our municipal counsel?
Mr. Graham.
Currently? Legal counsel? Because we rescinded our last motion. However, those minutes haven't been approved.
Mr. Chair, can I answer what I believe would be our legal counsel?
I would see our prosecuting attorney as of right now.
Good answer.
Well, also, we, we did agree to hire Mr. Graham for all pertinent things that require civil defense also. I mean, that, that was done quite a while ago.
Yeah, I understand that, but there, there appears to be some discrepancy. I agree. That's stated in MCL, the statute.
What Ashley does write, it goes to Myrma. And then it sounds like if it, it would go to Lauren, and then if it's something huge or whatever.
That the board determines that they would have Attorney Graham look at, and thus the process.
Correct.
I don't, it, it sounds that way, but this would clarify that in that it, it's, would clarify in that it comes back and the administrator, the administrator makes that decision, and as Ashley has said, as it goes to Attorney Graham, then it would be something that comes before the board. So that's already built in the policy. It's been just recently read here, so that the motion that I've made then clarifies that. And then it's, as per, as Ashley said, per statute, she would still have to come before the board on going to this. Then we would make that decision on going forward because that's what, it's the way the statute states. That's why my earlier was saying that it would, would come back to, the steps would be the, to MMNRA and then the Attorney Graham. And, but then that's got another legal aspect of it that Attorney Graham couldn't assign it to the prosecutor. That's, that's some of the things that we've heard here.
So that's why I would want to come back to Ashley.
Right.
Mr. Graham wouldn't be assigning it. It would be our administrator saying it'll go left or it'll go right.
Right. And, and then if, as per Ashley's quote of this other statute, which we get enough of them here, that, that she has to come before the board when it goes to Attorney Graham.
Yeah, I, I see your complexity there. I have a problem with that.
It's not a problem. It's a reality of what we're dealing with here. Just trying to break it down and then simplify this as much as we can. Others have passed statutes that we have to live with.
I, I don't have a problem with her directing which way it wants to go. I mean, if she wants to use Lauren for something, that's absolutely fine by me, but to, to need board action every time we're going to use Scott Graham. I mean, she should have that ability in her own discretion. And if it's going to go beyond a certain amount of money, then yeah.
Well, Ashley, on your, what you quoted there is, is that part of our policy that says it, it has to come before the board?
Uh, no, that is MCL.
522?
Forty, no.
That's a law.
So, that's what I thought it was.
Sorry. This one is 49.71.
Okay.
If I may. Been on this, what, about an hour now?
Yep.
We have the rest of this to go?
Yep.
I would, I, like, I'd have, Commissioner Barron would have to rescind his motion, then I would have to rescind my second. We, we got to move on to this one way or another. We, we either vote on giving Ashley the power to go one way or the other or, I, I, I don't know. I, I'm, I'm hung here and I just, but I, we got to get this done. We got to move on. We're at quarter after seven now, and we haven't even got into the new business yet.
Right. Go ahead, sir.
Well, we have, if, the motion that was put forward, if we pass that motion, it's under legal statute that Ashley's under. It's, that continues that it go to MMNRA, that's clear. Then the, if the issue is one that needs corporate counsel outside of our prosecutor, then Ashley has to come before us. It's not a question of whether we can change that or not. It's already state statute. So this just makes it as a motion and a second to say, okay, here we, we've basically aren't coming in compliance with what that is. And so we still have our corporate attorney available for what we need to have.
Then, then if you want to rescind or whatever you got to do to make the motion, I'll back.
Just make the motion. You've seconded it.
Okay, then, then I call the question.
I support.
All right, so vote on calling the question. First, Rocky.
Okay, Melner.
Yes.
You.
Yes.
Barron.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes. Hey, we got a full board.
Yes.
That's great.
They're ice skating in hell. All right, so that, now with the question on call, now we have vote on the, the procedure, the motion. Nancy?
Uh, Melner.
Read the motion.
Read the motion first.
She's got the, the hiring to help. I mean, hurry up.
Moved by Commissioner Barron and seconded by Commissioner Peterson. That, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Barron and seconded by Commissioner Peterson to have MMRMA be contacted first, and then the administrator would determine the path that it goes to. And if it's Attorney Graham, it must come before the board. So I, I know that's not exactly how you said that.
Does that coincide with your motion, sir?
It's the gist of it, yes.
Your second, Mr. Peterson. Does that coincide with it?
Yes.
Then roll call.
Melner?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Ann Moyles?
Yes.
Thank you.
Jesus. Jesus had nothing to do with that. All right.
Well, it's confusing.
New business, the payment of bills.
Hold on. Sorry, but we have to address the civil attorney stipend increase. She would like to increase her stipend from six to 12,000. Just need an approval on that.
I'll move that we increased stipend from six to 12,000 for the next, is it for the next fiscal year?
For fiscal year '24. We've already had the budget presentation. It was already included in all that. I just want it documented.
We have a motion by Commissioner View, supported by Commissioner Melner to increase prosecuting attorney's office an additional $6,000 for fiscal year '24. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now we move on to new business of our bills.
I have examined all claims presented and recommend payment of the following and that the county clerk be directed to issue orders on the county treasurer to the climates for the amount allowed. 737,067.30 and commissioner expenses of 1,512.98.
I would need a motion to pay our bills. So move. Moved by Commissioner Barron, support, supported by Commissioner Peterson. Additional discussion, please. All those in favor, oh, no, it's a roll call. Go ahead, please.
Commissioner Melner?
Yes.
You?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Ann Moyles?
Yes. Our bills are paid. Item number two is an investment report. Thank you, sir.
Our county treasurer is going to consent the next couple of items.
Welcome.
Thank you. So you should have gotten the investment report. It's just the required quarterly report. And I'm basically here on that for any questions you might have.
Gentlemen, do you have questions for our treasurer?
Well, the obvious one, how are, how are investments doing?
Good, actually. Compared to last year, we about doubled our interest income, but that's kind of just in comparison with how much interest rates have gone up since, since the pandemic and the recovery. Since the pandemic, things are going well.
Anything else? I'm sorry that you had to sit through all that, just for that few moments.
And I've got number three as well.
Okay, well, very good. And we'll talk about item number three, which is the, the 2020 for closure sale reports.
Yes, so we, we foreclosed on five parcels in 2023 from, based on 2020 taxes that were assessed. Four of those parcels we sold at auction. One were, was claimed by Masonville Township by first right of refusal. And so they now, they took possession of that property in payment for the back taxes on the property. That's something new that started this year. That's sort of an evolving law that happened. It used to be that if a township purchased a property, it had to be used for a municipal purpose. And any proceeds that would be earned on that property from the sale would then have to be turned over to the county. That's not the case anymore. Townships and cities can now claim the properties and keep the excess proceeds. However, the taxpayer that was foreclosed on can now claim the excess proceeds. So if a township or city takes a property by first right of refusal, they do have to deal with the excess proceeds claims from former taxpayers.
Okay, now, is that, does the township have to sell that property?
They do not, no. They can still keep it if they, if they want.
Okay, now, how does the taxpayer whose property was foreclosed on claim that there's excess from that? That's it, because it's a sale to the township in essence. How do they claim the excess from that?
They would claim it basically with us or through the township via a lawsuit at this point. It's, it is evolving law. There's a form you can file as a notice of intent to claim, but then the claims have actually been coming by civil suit.
But then how do they determine the excess? Because the township did, just took it because of back taxes, but the property has a market value, right?
That's correct. The treasurers, me, we've been calculating the excess based on a formula which involves the back taxes plus administrative fees plus interest and a 5% commission for the expenses of the sale and legal fees that were involved in the sale.
Okay. I have another question. I don't mean to hog it here, but I got, the foreclosures now. The fund that the county has from the sale of foreclosures, this law, this, it was a court case that created this circumstance. Now, there was a period of time that former property owners could claim their excess. I believe that's passed, or is that still in, still going on?
It's different for different years of foreclosure. So the Raffielli case is the case that changed a lot of this law. That was determined in 2020. So there is a form that's due by July 15th of the year following the foreclosure year for foreclosures from 2020 onward. Prior to that, there was a class action lawsuit from which those claimants could have applied to their claim until, I believe, October 13th was the deadline on that.
Of this year?
Correct. Or they could opt out. Delta County had, I believe, six opt outs from that class action. So we have some that are going to claim proceeds in the class action. We haven't got that figure yet. And then we've got some that we know have opted out of that class action, and they'll bring separate suit to the county.
Okay, now, that brings up the question, that fund that we have from that, from the foreclosures that have sold, what, what, what amount of it is that we have that would not have a claim against it?
I couldn't tell you offhand, but I can tell you there's enough in the fund to cover all the claims.
Right, but, okay, what is the fund actually right now, the total amount?
I couldn't tell you without looking. Sorry.
Okay. All right.
Gentlemen, anything else? I mean, thank you for your time. We have, well, the airport is up for the next airport grant contract with the authorization for projects.
I'll try to be much shorter this time. So item number four, the airport grant contract and authorization for the airport project. That is related to Michigan Department of Transportation contract number 2, 2023-0588, which is a certified contract. This covered a airport improvement grant for an airport improvement project which was the reworking or rehabilitation of runway 119 and 1028, including the remarking of taxiways, Alpha Bravo and Charlie. That work has been done. This contract is just the certified copy. The last step in the process is signing off on it so we can correctly receive and allocate the federal and state chair funds. And that will close that part of business. And then, and a similar note, item number five, the airport, sorry.
We got a motion, we need a motion.
We would need a motion to enter into the contract, so...
I'll make the motion we enter into the contract.
All right, so we have...
I'll support.
Motion by Commissioner Peterson, supported by Commissioner View. Additional discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, that would pass unanimously. Very good, sir. Please continue.
Item number five, Airport MDOT Contract Amendment 2020-0032/A1 Amendment 1. This is an amendment to a preexisting contract that concerned the acquisition of our vehicle, the rehabilitation of taxiway Bravo, lighting, our new airfield backup generator, and the reconditioning of taxiway Bravo pavement. Again, all the, all pavement. Again, all the work has been completed. This amendment basically just increased the cost share amount on behalf of the federal government and the state to satisfy the increased cost requirements of the overall contract.
I would need a motion for the amendment.
I'll make a motion for the...
Support. Moved by Commissioner Peterson, supported by Commissioner Melner for the approval of this amendment. All those, additional discussion.
What, what was the cost increase?
It was, I believe, 27?
24, oh, sorry, is it on? $24,764, but that is not the share that the county would pay. The county only pays 2.5%, so it's $619.10.
What a bargain.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That would pass unanimously. Item six, no item, yeah. Go ahead, sir.
Item seven is a service agreement proposal between the airport and what would potentially be our new consultation company, Mead and Hunt. We previously used Prine and Newhoff. This consultation company, in addition to providing specific services related to some of the business we just discussed, such as negotiating the capital improvement plan and monitoring different airport improvement projects and airport improvement grants. And additionally, to do that, they would also provide conditional services that would be of great value to the airport and, and me and the assistant manager specifically in negotiating contract negotiations, general processes and programs at the airport where we could use a consultant with many years of airport experience to help us fill some gaps in our own experience to get back on track.
I would need a motion to accept Mead and Hunt.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Peterson.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Barron. Additional discussion.
We, we didn't approve this before?
We did. We're just looking, this is the contract, so we need approval for sign, signature.
Okay, but we approved everything.
It went through the advisory board and then...
Well, I was getting confused. It keeps coming back and also. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And then we have the RFP for the airport refuelers.
I do apologize. Yes.
That's all right.
Number six, yes, the RFP, Airport NFP 407 Refueror Overfill Shutdown System Bid Award. This is... This is one of several leftover items, the compliance issues that I spoke to earlier. This was left over from the fiscal year 22, annual airport audit has since been, the compliance deadline has since been extended several times. This is one of the compliance issues that we've been working very diligently on because of the amount of time it's going to require to source the materials. The single bid we did receive was from Sparling Corporation, which is located downstate. They are prepared to order the material. Upon receiving the material, they will travel up here and complete the installation of the equipment, both on our above-ground Jet A fuel tank and our fuel, our mobile fuel truck, which will then put us in compliance with the National Fire Protection Act 407 regulation and the outstanding issue that we currently have, one of the several outstanding issues we currently have on our.
I'll move that we award the bid to Sparling Corporation in total amount of 20,130 dollars.
I have a motion by Commissioner View.
Support.
Ordered by Commissioner Peterson. Additional discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Arrived next at the township zoning contracts. You have them in your packet?
Mm-hmm.
And commissioners, what a pleasure on this.
I will make a motion that we extend it until one more year.
I'll support.
We have a motion by Commissioner Melner, supported by Commissioner View. Additional discussion regarding these contracts?
Ashley, did you find out, figure out how much money that they brought in?
I don't have the exact number on here, but I did look at our budget for the year and if we budget, if we bring in what we brought in last year, we'll be fine with building and zoning.
So we're doing good on it?
So I kept it the same. I did not make any any improvements. You'll see a template. I just needed the parcels for each township, which we get from the equalization, so.
Okay, thank you.
And then I also spoke with the Township Association, Mary, and she had said that she would like to see that this was approved, so.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Item 10 would be the opioid task force. Uh, nine, excuse me, I'm sorry.
This is my recommendation, along with Commissioner View, to create a committee for the opioid settlement funds that are coming into Delta County. The purpose of this committee or have, or has, we have been calling it is a task force. It is to provide a roadmap for the county to plan for use, for and use of opioid funds. Opioid settlement funds present an opportunity for utilization of funds with fewer restrictions than federal, state, or other funding sources to address the changing needs of the overdose. The drug overdose environment is constantly changing and this opportunity to strengthen prevention, reduce harms, and support recovery is critical, is a critical step in changing the course of Delta County's community. So there's two viable options for this committee. There's a standing or a special. I did provide the rules of procedure definitions for each committee and whatever the commission chooses to go with. Special committees are created from time to time by board action for special purposes set forth at a time of their creation. The terms of the appointments of the members of special committees shall be determined by the board in accordance with the purpose for which they are created and shall be concluded when that purpose is accomplished or when that they are discharged from such responsibility by board action. And then these special committees are automatically terminated upon election of new board chair. So they would have to be reelected.
I, I don't like that.
And that little caveat, I didn't really like for this purpose.
What about an ad hoc committee? I didn't, I didn't see anything.
We don't have anything about an ad hoc. These are the two committees that we have.
But in our.
So we have, in our rules of procedure. So we have, and then the standing committee, which can be created also from time to time, and they have a designated meeting. Let's see, and shall be in accordance with board action, which shall be established at the time of their formation, subject to subsequent board review and action, and shall be included but not limited to the following. And we already have two underneath there. So I'm looking, and then I also provided 11-member board. Two county commissioners, the county administrator, a recovering addict, someone from the criminal legal system, a law enforcement representative, education community, youth and family service providers, healthcare communities, mental health providers, treatment providers, nonprofit and community groups. And this just will help us gather information that we need to, where we should be placing these opioid funds.
So you've got the structure for an 11-member committee and now you just, we need to determine what path you want to take and.
Is stand, we can't do an ad hoc committee because I remember there was, we had an issue when we were doing something that, that was in our procedure somewhere where we had to have 30 days notification in order to form an ad hoc committee because that was used at one of the meetings once.
I think our administrator has given us two viable options. Personally speaking, I'd like to take one of these.
I think we utilize ad hoc and special committee. I think that's what we, as interchange.
So this would not be an ad hoc committee. This would be just a very temporary.
Eighteen years.
What do you call this? Just a special committee?
Task force special committee.
Oh, what is your direction, gentlemen?
Well, I'll move, we perform a standing committee and accept applications in the criteria needed to structure that task force that we need for that committee.
Standing or special?
It would be a standing committee, which means it meets all the time as needed. That's what a standing committee does. And, and this, this project is for 18 years, so I don't think we're going to be on the commission 18 years from now.
We'll be breathing in 18 years.
When this is void.
I'll support.
All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner View and supported by Commissioner Melner. Additional discussion?
All right, that's to accept applications in the criteria of the structure needed for this task force on this standing committee, just so Nancy has the wording right.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, that passes. Okay, thank you to, for businesses opening in Delta County.
Commissioner View, you asked for this one to be on the agenda.
Oh, I did? No, I, I was attending some open houses and, uh, stuff like that, and I, I thought it would be nice that, and I know we're going to leave out a lot of people that have opened up business throughout the county over the many years, but I, but I thought it would just be nice if we could come up with something where, when these businesses take a stance in our community and invest, a lot of times they're, they're, they're life savings in opening a business that we could recognize them at a commission meeting just by mentioning the name of the business and stuff like that. I, I just, it was a general discussion with Ashley that I thought would be nice on anyone that would move into our community and start a business, even if they, you know, that, it was just a general discussion. I, I didn't know if there was anything that we could do about it, but I would like, you know, if we as commissioners know things that are coming up and we go to these open houses and stuff and ribbon cuttings that, we can let the chair know and he can give a nice praise to them for investing in our county at, at, at the different meetings or something.
And we could also issue a certificate or something of thanks or.
Well, I thought of that too, but I didn't know how far we wanted to go with it. But I just wanted to put it up on the table that I think as a board, we're thinking of, of the people that are in our community, that invest in our community, because without them, we really don't have a good community. And, and we need them to, to move forward that way.
I make a motion that we adopt this policy.
Support.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second.
Mr. Chair, is, can I ask Mr. Peter, is that with a certificate or?
Yeah. That would be with, we can do the certificate, yes.
Okay, all right. Well, I mean, we're just generally talking, so I wanted to make sure we clarified that.
Maybe we could develop a policy before we adopt it. I mean, I, I like this idea, Steve, I really do. It's, it's, because people put everything into their business, I mean, it's, can be very intimidating.
I guess my question is, how do, how do you determine what businesses?
That would be something we have to look in. No, you're, you're right, but, see, right now, I'm working off the Chamber of Congress.
Right.
Okay. Well, and they're a good entity, but there's a lot of people that start businesses that aren't part of the chamber. So we're just going to have to rely on the public to notify the county administration on, or whatever. What do you think, Nance?
Well, we have a list of DBAs each month.
Oh, okay, yeah, well, there you go.
But that, that's not for LLCs, you know.
Well, that's a start.
But it would be a start. It would be a DPA.
That would be a start. We can hone in on it as we move on in the future.
So I have a motion, I have support. Additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Purchase of procurement, purchase and procurement policy, excuse me. Say that three times fast. Please.
This was presented to the finance committee. And I just want to bring it up one moment. So I determined that, we had several policies in our administration office concerning purchase orders, procurement policies, purchasing, and I just wanted to compile them into one location. Also, we had some policies that were probably from the early 2000s, were still applicable, only portions of them, because they were never rescinded. So it was, it was very convoluted. So I have compiled them and made some changes on the policies. Couple of the major changes were increasing the purchase order. We used to require all of our departments, any purchase over $500, they would have to request a requisition for whatever it was. It would come up to our administrative assistant, she would approve it, it would be sent back down to the department head. That department head would have to make a, an invoice, attach that purchase order requisition into the invoice, and then it would go back into our accountant, then to the administrator, and then to the clerk. Anything over 500, or under 500 and above. 500, we haven't updated that in 20 years.
That's lunch now, right?
Right, so I've increased it to 1,000.
And I'm hungry.
So that is one item. I've also increased some other thresholds. I've increased the micro purchases threshold. It's from 35, or from, I'm sorry, the thousand all the way up to 3,500. Let's see, they do not need to have any type of quotes or anything, bidding, sealed bidding. From 3,500 to 15,000, they are required to have informal purchase, or solicitation. So that's just calling up, requesting quotes. Anything above $15,000 is a sealed bid process. This correlates with the Occupational Code, Public Act 299, 1980, which allow, which states that any municipal construction that is being done that's above 15,000 needs to have engineering plans. So we related it back to there. Let me try to see. We also put a caveat of blanket purchase orders, which has exemptions of items that are reoccurring, utilities, reimbursement, insurance premiums, telephone, ad, and making it into one document that we have to fill out.
Great, you have the information submitted to you. I would need approval of this policy.
I make a motion.
I'll, I'll go ahead.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Barron and supported by Commissioner Peterson. Additional discussion?
Yeah, I just have one. Good job. The only thing I would have liked differently that I would, is that you would struck out the old, the old policy, you know, like the 500, so that we could do our comparison and really see the difference of what, how things went up. Because usually when new policies come out, you highlight, cross that out and show your changes, because it's real difficult to tell what, what has changed without your explanation, but thank you for that.
Absolutely.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that passes. We would need to send a thank you to H. Harris.
This is the recording secretary from the planning commission that resigned from our last board meeting. We did not make an approval to send a thank you to her. So I'm just looking for that.
Need the board approval.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner View, supported by Commissioner Peterson, and Holly Harris to thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. Resignation of M. Olson from the Human Services Board?
Ms. Olson stopped by my office and handed in her resignation letter, so I'm looking for approval to send a thank you letter for her service, and we will have a 30-day notice on our.
So moved to send that.
Moved by Commissioner Peterson. Supported by who?
Commissioner View made the motion.
Sorry, moved by Commissioner View, supported by Mr. Peterson. Send Mrs. Olson a thank you for her service. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Now, Parks and Forest, your discussion, gentlemen?
I would, I would like to make a motion that we direct the Conservation District to not do any work at, at the county forest, no new projects until during their, their final days to the end of the year.
Support.
All right, well, I have a motion by Commissioner Peterson, supported by Commissioner Barron. Additional discussion?
I think we, I've always received this letter, copy of this from the, from the DNR trust fund. I think it was, I think it behooves us to answer that and then make sure that nothing's changed as we're in this process, and so it makes sense not to do anything at the forest.
We could, yeah, I agree. I mean, we will be responding to the DNR in detail, and so when we're in the process of doing that, I, I don't think any activity up there should be done, because I don't know where this response is going to bring us, but, which is.
But they, Mr., go ahead.
Go ahead, please.
I mean, I hate to interrupt.
No, you're fine.
But my thoughts go real quick if I don't speak. If something needs to be done up there, can't we add to that motion that they'd have to have board approval? I don't want them to stop managing whatever closure or gates that have to be closed, if any. I, I'm not familiar with it, but if they really need to do something, I don't want to stop them from doing anything up there.
I'm not sensing that, what we're basically saying is that the board's not approving any additional activities right now until we respond, which will be the next motion.
But just the day, the tactical, day-to-day stuff would be.
I see Mr. Peterson and Mr. Barron on their motions.
You know, I'm trying to clarify it a little better.
Well, I, I don't, well, I don't see that there's really any day-to-day work that has to be done up there at this point in time. The, the, the gates won't be closed yet for the seasonal roads, and, and it's a forest. It's been sitting there for a million years and it's going to sit there for another million years. I think it's, I don't think we need to have anything done up there at this point in time. And the, the county will be taking it back over here the first of the year and make any determinations of anything that needs to be done at that point in time. And again, we need to reply to the, to the.
DNR.
Letter from the DNR prior to doing anything, I think.
Yeah, that will be our next motion, I hope. But, I mean, go ahead, Mr. View.
Well, can we, I don't know what needs to be done either. Can, can the chair of the district, county district, speak to us right now and see if there is anything that, that needs to be done on a technical, you know, on a day-to-day basis prior to winter or during winter or during the next three to four weeks while they have it under control? Would that be appropriate?
Well, we have a motion in a second, but go ahead.
I would.
Well, I mean, before we vote, I want to know if there's.
Well, Steve, the forest has been managed by the Soil Conservation District and its former CEO and now manager, Rory Mattson, if you want to know if anything needs to be done up there, he's got, they've been doing this for, how many years have we had the forest? And the, I would, that would be more astute to have, he report what we, what it needs to be done at the forest, if anything, this time of year.
I just want to know. I thought the board chair would be familiar with if there is anything. He, he may come up there and say, no, there's nothing, it's all set. I mean, he may have a list of what they would like to do, but this motion would stop that. But I just want to make sure if there is something.
You made your, your point very clear, obviously, so. So do you want to amend your motions, or do we just go forward? You've got a motion?
I, as far as I'm concerned, I, I would stay with my motion.
And I stay with my second.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor and a second on the floor. Additional discussion.
I also would like to have the board chair come up and talk about this.
Okay, you've got.
It's, it's gone. We got to do the motion first.
We can still have him come up and talk.
Go ahead, please. Do you have a question? You want, you want to hear from Mr. Kaplan?
No, I was just saying that, I was just asking if you were allowed to have somebody come in during a motion.
Um, no, you can't. We have a motion on the floor, and we can bring him in after the motion if, if the board chooses. But that's, right now, we have a motion on the floor that I want to attend to. The motion would be that there would be no activity up in that forest done in terms of, clarify that, just for, any, any projects, any?
No, no new projects, no, no construction, no, no tampering with the ponds or the roads, as was stated in their, that they were going to do in their, in their meeting.
So, all right, so we, the motion would read that there's no activity with projects or construction prior to the first of the year, is that correct? I want to make sure, because I want to make this properly, because it's going to be, so I, I'm seeking clarification on your motion. You don't want any activity up there in terms of changing the infrastructure?
Right.
Okay.
No, no, no changes to the infrastructure, no modifications to the property.
All right, so no changing the infrastructure, no modifications to the forest up there for the duration of 2023?
Correct.
That is your motion? Do you support that?
Yes, I do.
All right, then.
How do you add to a motion? Can I add to that?
I clarified. I didn't add to it.
No, but can I add?
I don't know. That's a very good parliamentarian. I think he would.
What's the proper way, I mean, you have a motion, and now something can be amended to that emotion? Can I?
As long as the person making the motion and the second agree.
Okay, well.
Read what you want, Mr. View, and I'll see what, what I think.
Well, the, the motion is that no modifications can be, be made up there, and I'd like to add until all issues of concern in the letter dated 11/22/20, of '23, sent to our administrator and our board chair are resolved, not just till January, but till all issues are resolved with that letter.
I would, I would rescind and modify my motion.
Okay, so do you rescind and modify your second?
I could do that, but I'd just point out one thing, that there is something that usually takes place in January, and that would exclude it. There's a certain, shutting of certain gates to stop the damage.
Well, that's what I wanted to find.
Well, that takes place in January, but the county will have control of that in January.
I know, but he said until it's resolved with basically the letter.
Oh, yes. Okay. In your motion, that we would have to change that to let us go up and close gates and that.
Except, well, we'll make the exception to, to, to close the gates.
So how do you want the motion to read? Because you're.
I feel like Helen Keller trying to drive traffic right now.
Well, just, we're.
All right. Just, I'll tell you what.
Our original motion takes care of that.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. So what is your motion, Mr. Peterson?
My motion at this time is to not allow any modifications to the infrastructure or the property, County Forest property in Cornell.
For the remainder of the calendar?
For, for the remainder of their contract, yes.
All right. We have a motion. Does that stand with your second?
Yes.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I oppose.
All right, very good. Four to one. I would like formal motion on responding to the DNR.
I have one.
Okay, let me hear it.
I've been writing that up. I move that our county administrator, Ms. Young, request a 90-day extension to reply to the letter dated November 22, 2023, from M. Scott Bowen, Director of the Michigan DNR.
Okay, so we will be responding, I understand your motion. So that, I have a motion, do I have a second on that?
Support.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner View, supported by Commissioner Peterson. Now, in discussion, I think it is imperative that we respond to, as I understand it, there have been some complaints, and we need to respond to, you know, allegations of reduced access or accessibility and gates, every aspect that can be brought up. So the county needs to issue a very comprehensive response, but also Mr. Barron's point of if there's complaints, we want to, we want to see those complaints. And as I understand it now, the vast majority of them have been phoned in, they, they weren't letters. And so the, the response that we make needs to be comprehensive in scope and.
And that's why we're asking for the extension. And all this information that we're talking about can be put in that letter, because I, I would like a list of the complaints, written or oral, whoever received, what department received them, or also wrote down. I'd like to know the number of complaints and the number of different complainants. You know, it could be 100 people with 100 complaints of the same thing, or it could be 100 complaints, five people saying the same thing. I don't need to know their names.
Yes, we do need to know their names.
Not at this point, I don't, because there could be, there could be bias.
Okay, you have a difference of opinion on this, I understand.
No, eventually, we, I'm just giving you.
This should be in the letter that goes, in the letter, you said information in the letter, that that, all that should be brought forth. We, we are in the United States of America, we have a constitution, and this is part of the due process. We should know who the accusers are and their complaints.
But we're dealing with.
That's, that will be up to our administrator.
Yeah, let her read it, because in the end, we just want the 90D, 90 days of opportunity to speak with the individuals and get all the pertinent facts from the right people so that we can give that comprehensive report. And I'll tell you what, I, I was up in the forest today, and there is a lot of stuff that can be substantiated just by going up there and looking at, depending on what the complaints are. I went up with Commissioner Peterson today.
All right, very good. Additional discussion. All those in favor of responding to the DNR requesting an April 1 response to a comprehensive letter, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, very good. Item three, or is there another item to come before the board?
No, we're done.
I, I have a, it's still in this, what, do you have something?
Nope.
Okay, the, the Soil Conservation District has a certain amount of equipment, and that, that would, at the end of their contract, that would be removed from a county property, which would be at the end of this month.
Removed from where? Excuse me?
It would be, their equipment would be removed, because we're not extending, we're, we're taking this over, and that'll give us a clean break. So whatever they have of their own equipment that they're using right now as part of the pro- take care of the forest.
Would be taken back to Soil Conservation.
Or the parks, that that would be removed from county property.
Do we have an itemized list, all that, or not?
There's, there's itemized list. I'm not exactly sure what it is, but actually, I think there's something that.
We have of what's ours.
What's, what's theirs.
Okay, and that's all that's important.
Okay, but I would make that motion.
I would support that motion.
I have a motion, and I have support regarding the removal of Conservation District equipment from county property by the end of the calendar year. Additional discussion.
Where is that equipment stored right now?
I think it is.
What, our equipment?
No, theirs.
Theirs on our property.
Do, do they have equipment on our property?
Yes, of course.
Like at the park and?
Well, they have like the forest tractor, or the tractor that they use at the forest. It's, use your microphone. They have the tractor, last I heard, was on the county parks, I believe, property at Pioneer.
And, and we don't want to work with them and just leave them store stuff there or not? I mean, wouldn't that be admirable to, because they help us out at different times or not? Or we just want to break ties completely with them? Even though they're not managing, are they going to still be doing stuff on a county level for us?
No, they won't.
No.
Well, not with me, anyway. I'll just say that, that, that I want to make a clean break on this and, and be done with it.
We have a motion, we have a second. Additional discussion.
Well, I was just trying to get some clarification.
No, I, that's why I'm.
Do they have a place to put it? Or don't we care?
They, they, they have the district property, which is up by the Cornell Forest, which they have, from what I understand, they have room to store it up there.
All right, gentlemen. Anything else, Mr. View?
It's, it's tough to vote on things when you don't know what's going on.
Doing.
Well, it's, it's going on, is that we're making a clean break, so there's not, the confusion is removed by not having, this is theirs, this is ours, it's clean.
I thought we had a list, though.
It's better if it's not there.
John, Steve, anything else, please? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, so it's a 3-2? Very good. That concludes our list tonight. Now it's general public comment. You will have three minutes to address the board. I would remind you to stay in order, please, if somebody's saying something you don't agree with. And please see the microphone and tell us what's on your mind. Good to see you, sir.
My name is Ed Flory, and I'm a trustee for the Cornell Township Board. I'll be very brief here. I'm going to be reading a couple of paragraphs out of project number TF 16-212. Project title, Cornell Land Acquisitions. I'm just going to read, it's too long. The agreement together with the reference appendix constitutes the entire agreement between the parties and may be modified only in writing and executed in the same manner as the agreement is executed. Two, the time period allowed for the project completion, 7/14/2017 to 7/31/2019. Hereafter referred to as the project period. Request by the guarantee to extend the project period shall be made in writing before the expiration of the project period. Now, I'm not, I'm not an attorney, but this tells me that the, that they're in violation of the trust. An attorney will have to say it. And here, this is another page out of this Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund. TF 160212. Will a site be opened to the general public? Yes. At this Monday through Saturday. Comment, open 24/7, 356 days per year. How will the public reasonably be able to access this site? Automobile, public transportation, motorized trail, non-motorized trail, including mountain bike and hiking park, other described horsebacks. This property has been, the gates are locked on it. I don't know why whoever was up there looked, but the gates are locked. They've been locked from day one. The, the main drive-in gate has been locked, the walk-in gate across from it is locked. And I think this is in violation of the, of the grant.
Thank you, Mr. Flory. General public comment.
Chairman, board members, and the public, my name is Tim Salisbury. I live in Wells Township. Recent events, word of mouth, social media reports, as well as news reports, have stirred me to the level of concern that I would like to refresh the board and the public that elected officials serve at the pleasure of the constituency and the citizenry, citizenry, that they are elected to represent all of the citizenry, not just special interest groups, not their friends, not their associates. And I again stress to remind the public that they are elected to represent all of the citizenry. I wish the board would acknowledge and agree with that statement, that they are elected to represent all of the citizenry. In regards to the recent legal opinion, my question would be, why aren't you seeking the advice of the Attorney General's Office rather than shopping for an opinion that might be favorable to this side or that side? You cannot have bipartisan action which leads to county liability. The opinions that you source, are they going to indemnify the county if the county is held liable in a legal proceeding? These are opinions for the Attorney General and the State Supreme Court, not shopping for which lawyer serves our interests the best. The law of the land is written in the Constitution. It needs to be interpreted as it was written. If it's not going to be interpreted as it was written, that job lies to the legislature, not public opinion, not board opinion. If you want to change something, there are avenues to go about it. The bipartisan infighting must stop to progress forward. I would like to close by saying that none of my comments are directed towards any one individual or group, just the fact that my level of displeasure in politics today locally, statewide, and nationally have stirred me to disgust. I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Salisbury. Please refrain from, please refrain from clapping. You're out of the, that's your first and only warning here, please. There's a time to speak, and it's now if you want to speak.
Good evening. Tyler Anthony, I live in the city of Escanaba. The term "call the question" is a non-standard form of a motion, previous question. The proper form in its simplest is, "I move the previous question." Previous question is a subsidiary motion. It requires a second. It is not debatable or amendable, and its adoption requires a two-thirds vote. For particulars, see Roberts Rules of Order, newly revised, 12th Edition, Section 16. Also, in referen- that was in reference to an item under unfinished business. Under new business, item 18, there was discussion whether or not to have the Chair of the Conservation District come up and speak, and there were comments that said, no, he's not allowed. Well, per the Delt County Board of Commissioners Rules of Procedure, Section 7 point, well, Section 7, only members of the Board of Commissioners shall be given the floor to speak during any board meeting except, per Section 7.1, county officials who may speak with the consent of the majority of the board members present. For the love of Pete, please, read your own Rules of Procedure, read Roberts Rules of Order.
Thank you, sir. General public comment.
But anyway, on the Delt County Forest, I would like to point out, I have a copy of the letter that was sent to you as far as from the Trust Fund and Clay Summers. I know Clay. I've dealt with him before many times. And I actually was in charge of the other Wildlife Habitat Grant while we were working out there. Of course, we had problems with the COVID, and things were delayed. But as it states right now, if you look at the actual documentation here, as far as availability, whether it be for hiking, skiing, bird watching, hunting, bicycling, or any other lawful outdoor recreation pursuit, you notice it doesn't say anything about motorized vehicles? That is the problem. People want.
People want to be able to take their four-wheelers or their trucks in there by law on the state land. You do not have to allow that. We are actually, I say "we" because we're all in this together, the general public, we are in compliance right now. As the Director told me at that time, if you remember, a couple of meetings back, Lady stood up and actually read from her phone on the report that was in the paper, oh, we had 160 protesters there. Well, I was there also, but I arrived in the same bus as the Director and the people from the trust fund. They listened to it for a little while, and they, Keith, the Director, told me, he says, Al, we're going to have a quick meeting. So I walked off. He called me back. He said, be in compliance. You work it the way we have the gems, and you keep those gates locked to protect what you have. You can make them walk from the main parking lot. Rory actually set up 10 parking lots. We have all types of things. They're talking about the handicap. Yes, we put it in there, we looked at it, but we were educated by the department as well. You cannot take and say 80 acres is just for the handicap. It's illegal, you can't do it. We found out the hard way. Putting in permanent blinds, the actual insurance end of it, for lack of a better term, was another thing. What if they go in there with a heater or something, and the damn thing, excuse my language, blows up, and they get hurt? What, what if? Okay, you always have what ifs.
Sorry, I wanted to cut you off, I'm sorry.
That's fine, but I will be answering this as well. I want you to know that.
Thank you, sir, very much. General public comment. General public comment.
Hello, my name is Clayton Harris. I live in Baldwin Township, and I'm also on the Planning Commission. I've been bringing an issue in my area about multiple homes and buildings that have been built without permits. I requested some help. I got some help with this issue through Stephen View, and he sent me a response, and then I got a response in it from Ashley. Stating that I wanted to sit down with Commissioners and talk to her about how I feel the Building Department is not doing their job. Her response is, I will not have a meeting with a member of the public, Commissioners, or the employees about personnel issues. This isn't personnel issues. I'm a retired builder. I'm positive that the Building Inspector Department is not doing their job properly. The Plumbing Inspector, I've sent emails to him asking for responses, never get a reply. When I bring one of these issues to the Building Inspector's attention, it takes multiple weeks of asking him, what did you do? What did you do? What did you do? First of all, without an occupancy permit on a building, you cannot occupy that dwelling. So I went to the Electrical Inspector on the first one. I went to the Plumbing Inspector, who sits three feet from the Building Inspector, and said, do you know anything about this? They said, no. I had already contacted the Health Department. The Health Department has a detailed complaint list, dates, times, whatever was done. The Building Department does not. I have brought, on the same day I brought the first project to the Building Inspector's attention, in his truck, in a three-mile drive around where I live, and said, this place, I suspect, does not have a building permit. It is a home built in the trees. Ashley is aware of that. They think it's a joke. The property right next to it has got about a $250,000 outbuilding for storing campers. No building permit, no inspections. The home across the street has enlarged itself in the last 15 years by 50%. No building permits, no inspections. And I believe that Ashley is also saying that the county has no liability to this. If somebody died, if an explosion happened, because no policies were followed. As soon as it was brought to the attention of the Building Department, I beg to differ. I believe there is a liability on the county's behalf. Why does the Building Department in Delta County not have a complaint form? So that when you ask.
I'm sorry, sir, we have to cut you off. Your three minutes have elapsed, I apologize. If you want to get a hold of me after the meeting, we can talk, but your three minutes would be up, sir.
I didn't see a timer.
No, we don't have a timer right now, because it's either broken or it's on. Yeah, she's not going to cut you off prior to three minutes. I mean, it's, you've been given the same amount of time anybody else would be. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. All right, general public comment, please.
Hey, good evening, everybody. Dave Adamini, Wells Township. Hard to know where to start after the last couple of weeks, but we will. We'll start with rules for the public comment. Rule number one, speakers limited to three minutes, no exceptions. Rule number four, comments of the speaker must relate to the business that is within the jurisdiction of the board. Rule number five, speaker shall refrain from making personal attacks upon any individual. So let's talk about the last meeting. Individual from California was given six minutes, almost nine. The crowd spoke up, and they were told to stand down, observe the rules of decorum, which were not observed. Gentlemen from California went on to personally attack not only our attorney, our prosecuting attorney, but several police officers who work in the area. At no time did anyone from the board shut that down. Again, rule number four, comments of the speaker must relate to business that's within the jurisdiction of the board. Now, that being said, if someone gets up here and calls out a Commissioner for their behavior as a Commissioner, that is not a personal attack. However, other things are, and they're not too hard to figure out.
Turn it down, please. I don't know what he's, language he's going to use, and I can't have access.
I do, because I watched the interview, and you, you gave an interview with this gentleman. You came up here, Commissioner Moyle, and said you support the police, but yet, what did you do to back that up? You interviewed with this gentleman who has been nothing but disparaging of our local police officers and our prosecuting attorney. I haven't seen you stand up and support them. What I saw you do was give an interview with the gentleman from California. And I found it interesting, because I had to suffer through that twice. And there's an interesting segment of it, I promise you, there's no swearing on this segment. And it's very brief.
Mr. Barron, are you calling him out of order?
Yes, he's out of order here.
You got a point of order, Dave, you need to refer to your comments.
So, I'm curious.
You're out of order in the audience, I'll ask you to remain quiet.
I'm curious, as I'm sure everyone in the county is, in what capacity, because not only did Mr. Castro state that Reed Hiken worked for you, so did Reed Hiken. So I'm curious, as everyone else is, at what capacity was he working for you during the election? And as far as, let's move on to the next issue. We're talking about the attorneys, and we determined that there was, what, 17 other counties that used the prosecutor? Perhaps we could call one of them to get some clarity on when and when we have to not notify the prosecutor when we use them or not. And I found it interesting, Commissioner Moyle, how you, as Tim.
You're out of time, sir, thank you.
That's awesome. No, it's okay.
General public comment.
Christine Williams, Ford River Township. Man, I'll tell you, there's some times I wish I still lived in Houghton. Anyways, past, past public comments I shared with this board, what I found in reviewing both the Delta County Parks Management contracts and the financials of the Conservation District over an 11-year period. And that, and that 11-year period was under the leadership of Rory Mattson. During this 11-year period, Mr. Mattson took from the county nearly $500,000 by charging an administrative fee. And please remember, this fee was in addition to the $75,000 annual contribution from the county to the Conservation District for Park Management. But tonight, I'm going to focus on one small part of that, and that was the growth of that administration fee. In 2011, Mr. Mattson charged the county $3,500 for that fee. But within seven years, that fee had climbed to $75,000. That is more than a 2,000% increase. I found this incredibly alarming, and I think it's very reasonable that you should have found that incredibly alarming as well. But I didn't seem to get that from you at all. During my career, I negotiated many contracts, and a fee increase of that magnitude would have been questioned, discussed, and would have been thoroughly analyzed. Again, that fee started out at $3,500, went to $5,000, then $10,000, then $20,000, then $30,000, then $40,000, then $55,000, all the way up to $75,000. Dropped slightly during COVID, but back up to $72,114.09 in 2022. Who on this board, or the previous members of this board, approved that? I looked through minutes, both Conservation District Board and this board, don't find anything. So who approved that fee structure change? Unfortunately, I don't have any confidence I'm going to get an answer on that, and I believe this happened because of your unwavering trust of Mr. Mattson, which we just saw again tonight. You coddle this individual, I don't understand why, I don't even care anymore. But it appears that that has clouded your judgment, and it repeatedly has clouded your judgment. So I would suggest to build back trust of your constituents and your fiscal responsibility that you audit every single contract that you have with an outside contractor, and that you find out whether or not this is happening elsewhere, because clearly, this happened under your watch, and you let it happen. Thank you.
General public comment. General public comment.
Teresa Ross, Ford River Township. Remember the guy that showed up here a couple months ago and bad-mouthed our prosecutor and called all cops pigs? Well, our chairman decided to contact this man, who is now featured in this disgusting podcast. There are recordings where Mr. Moyle lies about our prosecutor attorney. He called Dana Van Effen a drugging pig and Joe Kaplan a local libtard. These podcasts reach a large population of like-minded people. The man who was here is a grifter and chaos agent. Mr. Boyle is now bad-mouthing his constituents on a national level. This is not only disgusting, it is dangerous. Dana Van Effen, Escanaba. On November 16th, I submitted a fairly simple FOIA request to the Delta County Conservation District. Rory Mattson is the FOIA coordinator. FOIA requires a five, a response within five days. As of December 2nd, I have yet to have my FOIA request fulfilled, nor been notified of an extension. This is not Mr. Mattson's first FOIA violation, as the Conservation District is currently responsible for the county parks.
First, is that what the tie-in is? I'm trying to understand this, I mean, but are we being accused of FOIA violations, or is she unhappy with the Conservation District?
I think she's unhappy with the Conservation District, but since they are.
All right, go ahead.
Contract with us, she's voicing her concerns here.
Clarifications, fine.
As the Conservation District is currently responsible for the county parks, I would like the board to send a resolution to the Conservation District stating Rory Mattson must fulfill all outstanding FOIA requests before his tenure is complete on December 31st. Secretary of the Delta County Republican Committee, Leanne Omen, Escanaba. Dear Commissioners, there are residents in Delta County who believe the malfeasance of the November 3rd, 2020 election denied President Donald J. Trump his rightful second term in office. Many Republicans of citizens of Delta County would like to see the return of paper ballots, hand counts, simple analog tabulations, in single-day voting as ordered by federal law in 2 U.S. Code, Section 7. Local control of elections and the preservation of local election data are rapidly being taken over by the Secretary of State of Michigan and the Board of Elections. Recently, on August 25th of 2023, the Republican National Committee presented a two-page resolution urging a return to excellence in American voting and elections. In enclosed in this two-page document, please read the outline, the six statements that are marked. Whereas to present a formal resolution, form the Republican National Committee for Declared Opposition to Voting Manipulation Schemes and to return to the functional and historic balloting and polling experience that Americans understand, appreciate, and love. Whereas the grassroots activists of the Republican Party have discovered and made it abundantly clear that there are recognized problems with electronic procedures and intentional complications of instituted systems that complicate, belabor, and slow down our election process. Whereas election experts agree that the most resilient voting systems use paper ballots, either marked by hand or with an assistive device, and are verified by the voter before any means of tabulation. And resolve, the Republican National Committee boldly opposes means of voting that do not have the proper safeguards in place and are exclusively electronic, and calls on every county and state in the nation to use as the default ballot system, which are auditable, namely, hand-marked, voter-verified paper ballots, to ensure every voter is memorialized by paper record. Resolve, the Republican National Committee supports the rights of counties and states that are willing and able to completely and efficiently implement voting procedures that do not require the use of machines, and those that implement hand counting that are fully auditable. Resolve, the Republican Committee calls for elimination of temporary or pop-up voting location drop boxes and any other voting center that are not fairly defined and bound to the designated geographic territory and where voting location exists, namely, by precinct, so that the voting is accessible equitably by legal precinct, where or defined geographic unit in order to provide impartial access for all voters.
Thank you. Last call for general public comment. All right, very well, Commissioners' Concerns. Mr. Peterson?
Yes. I, as Commissioner View said, him and I went up to the County Forest this morning. I was up there yesterday by myself. I've been up there, I don't know, four or five times, something like that. And concerning the ponds, I will admit that one of the ponds can use some, some more work. It is steep-sided, it does not have to be filled in, there's other ways to take care of it. And as far as the wildlife not using it, when I was up there early in the year before snow, I saw deer tracks and, as was said, canines. When I was up there yesterday, and the pond was froze over, there were deer tracks, canine tracks, bobcat tracks, grouse tracks. To say that those ponds are not being used by wildlife, I think is, is a horrible misrepresentation. As I said, yes, the one pond for sure could use some work, cutting back some of the banks and taking out some of the steepness. Impeding travel, there's a perfectly fine trail that has been cut around it, around the, the ponds. So as far as the ponds go, I, like I said, other than maybe in the spring or something, going up there and doing a little work, I don't see any problem with those ponds whatsoever, and I think they're serving a useful purpose for the wildlife up there. And at this point, that's all I would like to say.
Mr. View.
I just want to thank the public for their comments. I, I don't know Robert's Rules of Order, but I learn every meeting the proper way, and I'll try to ask the right questions to proceed forward. And I do appreciate. And I do appreciate all them comments like that. Make me a better public servant for you. I just want to get that out, because I do feel bad when I, when something happens and I'm not able to understand all of it, because it is quite complicated in that process. I want to thank our administrator for bringing forth that opioid task force, them recommendations, and that we're going to be moving forward with that. It's over $1 million for the people of our community, for our county. And I think it's going to be well-served by the people that have a vested interest in here as we receive them applications. It's going to be great. Commissioner Melner was in outstanding recognition for excellence of service and attendance to the Delta County Township Association's annual meeting last Friday. I'd applaud him, but we're not allowed to applaud, so, well, I mean --
In this case, I should be tapped.
Okay, let's give him an applause. Let's give him an applause. You've got to remember that his district includes a lot of the, most of the townships in the area. I got half of Esconaba, Gladstone. I don't know what the rest of you have, but how many you have, John? How many? Ten. He's got a vast territory, and he is serving them well with this nice plaque or certification. They are very happy with him, and I just thought I'd let the public know. I missed a couple of meetings. I don't want to take real hard criticism on them, because the meeting dates were changed. I try to attend everything that I am obligated to attend, and I enjoy attending them and bringing back that information to the public that I've learned. And I think I've steered a lot of the Commissioners and our administration on different things that are happening around the county. With that being said, that's it. I made it short.
Mr. Melner.
Yeah, I try to attend everything I can also, and like Commissioner View says, you know, like last month, they were changing it because of hunting season, they were changing meetings because of Thanksgiving. Everything got all mixed up, so, but otherwise, it's a big job.
Sure.
Thank you. Well, I have a couple of quotes from Michelangelo. Genius is eternal patience. It's the first one. And the second one is, "The greater danger for most of us lies not in setting our aim too high and falling short, but in setting our aim too low in achieving our mark."
Nancy?
Ashley?
Nothing.
Okay. I, in terms of Roberts' Rules, the gentleman who brought that up was very articulate in what he brought forward. We loosely follow Roberts' Rules. It's important to note that Roberts' Rules of Order are rules, they're not laws. And so every chairman does their best to try to, you know, maintain consistency, but there is no official county policies. We loosely follow Roberts' Rules. We ask Clerk Prisrocky to be our parliamentarian in case there's any concerns about that. I've remained quiet on this for a while, but Dave, you've been a friend of mine for over 40 years, and I didn't call Chili, Ms. Ross. He called me. Now, I don't care if you like him or not. I had an interview with him. That doesn't mean I agree with everything the guy says. We agreed to disagree. He called me a cop sucker in the middle of that interview, but you neglected to mention that. He also, you know, I didn't bring him into Esconaba, but I was accused of that as well. If you go back in my 13 years of service and you find one vote that I've cast that takes anything away from law enforcement, you're not going to be able to do it, because even when I thought Ed Oswald didn't need a particular piece of equipment, he got it because he asked for it, because he's the sheriff. So I have always supported police. We agreed to disagree in that interview about Todd Tardif, who I consider just about a lifelong friend. Yeah, I'll speak my mind, and I'll speak my piece, just like you guys do. If I was as corrupt as some of you make me out, I would assume that Ms. Wickman would have me in bars already. No, I don't agree with everything Chili says. Some of the stuff is hysterical. He's also an entertainer. So that's, you know, you won't find one vote that I've cast to diminish law enforcement. You won't find, in fact, when you take a look at my votes, if you would take the time to do that, you'll find that I've, back in 2010, when I was first on the commission, I was the guy who brought up the fact that in our old jail, our jailers had radios that didn't work, and the first thing that I did was make a recommendation for $5,000 in new radios. I have always supported law enforcement. That doesn't mean I'm going to agree with all of them all the time. But if you want to paint me with a political brush, law enforcement has been a sacred cow for me, and I take umbrage with it. I don't need to hear your comments. Your time to speak is over. Thank you. By the way, the meetings have been getting a bit more pleasant. I thank you and respect the fact that you are adhering to the rules that we are trying to establish. I don't enjoy doing this as far as cutting people off and correcting them, but we're heading in the right direction, I believe, as a county. We have our next series of, we have a Commissioners' Meeting two weeks from tonight. There are no 30-day notice of appointments, or are there?
Yeah, there's --
We do have one for what, DATA?
Department of Human Services, and then also with the new standing committee of opioid task force.
Okay. Go to the county second floor Administrator's Office, and you can get applications for that. We would be grateful if you submitted application to any of that. So we have an opening for DATA, and we have this --
No, Department of Human Services.
DHS, all right. Very good. With that, I just need a motion to adjourn.